Good evening, welcome to the May 17th Troy City Council meeting. We are very pleased this evening to have with us Pastor Dan Lewis from the Troy Christian Chapel, who will provide us with that invocation and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise Pastor.
Thank you Mayor, would you bow for prayer? Our Heavenly Father, we reverence you this evening and we understand well that to reverence you is the beginning of wisdom. We ask for your blessing upon this council meeting, on the council, upon all of the citizens who are here, and especially we pray for all of the citizens in our city who have been distressed over the last two or three years, which have been difficult times for many, many families. We ask for your mercy upon them, indeed we ask for your mercy upon us all. Now may your blessing rest upon this meeting, we ask in the name of Christ Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it belongs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor, always nice to see you. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Brett Alhman, Mayor Shilly, here, Councilwoman Bell Demidi, Kate Fleming, here, Harla, here, Sherwin, here, McGuinness, here, Slater, here. Coram present, this evening we begin with two special events. First of all, we're pleased to have with us Rusty Katsounas, who is the President of the Saint Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church, and he is going to make a presentation here of something that's very special, it comes up in June.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to see you.
As you know, this year we celebrate the 17th year here in Troy, also is the 17th Annual Greek Festival, Opera Festival, in the grounds of the church. Of course, everybody's invited here, of course, everybody in the city invited to be there. It's a wonderful event, a family event, it's inexpensive, you can spend as much money as you want though, you know, we have a beautiful, one, we got a lot of food and beverages, also wonderful pastries, which I have an addiction, right here, the ladies of the church prepare for you guys to have for your break time. So once more time, I'd like to see all of you guys come to church.
And please give us the date again.
Twenty, June 25th, 26th, and 27th.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm sure there'll be more reminders and articles in the paper about it.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, a wonderful event, yes, thank you. And we have a special proclamation for Padma Kuppa, who is the recipient of the 2010 Diversity Champion Honor Roll Award, and her family is with her, I'm going to go down to the front to present for council, I'll meet you there Padma. Now, I had to put my glasses on, because there's so much information on here, the writing had to be a little teeny. Thank goodness for reading matter. This is the proclamation in recognition of Padma Kuppa, the recipient of the 2010 Diversity Champion Honor Roll Award. You're going to be very impressed when you hear all this information. Whereas Padma Kuppa has built a solid reputation as a committed volunteer, serving many organizations with an enthusiasm and dedication that is respected by all who know her. And whereas Padma has served on various school and civic boards, ranging from Girl Scout Leader and PTO Board, to Ethnic Issues Advisory Board, and currently the Troy Historical Commission. Her volunteer efforts and much of her personal time has been dedicated to developing a multitude of diversity initiatives within the city of Troy and the surrounding communities. Whereas Padma was appointed as one of the original members of the Ethnic Issues Advisory Board founded in 2003 by the Troy City Council, the mission of the Ethnic Issues Advisory Board to further enrich harmonious relationships and open communication in our diverse community through education and multicultural exchange, was always forward by Padma's work and involvement on the board. Whereas Padma's other diversity initiatives include starting the Troy Telugu Association Youth Committee, preserving hymns of a Hindu saint composer, and co-creating Team Troy, a diversity consulting firm. Team Troy developed Cultural Connections, a professional development program on diversity for the Troy School District. And whereas Padma's interfaith work includes serving on the Board of Wisdom, the Interfaith Leadership Council, as an outreach cheerperson for the Parhat, yeah, Paratia Temple, correct, and, you know, and co-founding the Troy Interfaith Group. She is a writer, an IT professional, and a mother, working to build a more holistic society, including her work to connect the Hindu community with the Jewish community to increase respect and understanding among youth. And whereas Padma opened the doors of the temple and welcomed wisdom participants of many faith traditions to learn about the Hindu faith, and educated seventh graders in Oakland County schools involved with the religious diversity journeys about Hinduism. And whereas, one of the most important aspects in Padma's life is her family, of course, including her husband Sudhikaar, daughter Shekri, and son Shres, who are all dedicated to sharing her commitment to welcome diversity and build an open community which will not tolerate racism or prejudice. And in fact, her children have been involved in doing their own special things. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Troy City Council extends special recognition to Padma Kuppa for her selfless and tireless service and dedication to this community. And be it further resolved, the Troy City Council and all Troy residents congratulate Padma for being a recipient of the 2010 Diversity Champion Honor Roll Award from the Race Relations and Diversity Task Force, and wish her continued success in all her future endeavors. And of course, presented this 17th day of May 2010, signed by myself, all the members of council, with great admiration. Thank you. Now besides her husband and her children, I think you have some other special guests?
I have a very special guest, my mom is here visiting me from India, so, can you get up? This is one of the people who has influenced me greatly, and I'm very grateful to her.
As you may or may not know, those watching and those others that are here in the audience, but we have the second most diverse city after Ann Arbor. And so we're very proud of our diversity, and for those that promote understanding and good relationships among all of us. It's very special. This evening, we do not have any carryover items or public hearings, so as our practice, we go right to public comment, and let me scroll to see if there are any that have signed up in that area. And we'll call on them in the order in which they are here. Mark Steimak.
Thank you Madam Mayor, and Madam Council, my name is Mark Steimak, and obviously, most of you know me as the Director of Building and Zoning, but I appear before you this evening as a member of the public. I want to apologize for the attire that I have on tonight, but I left Dallas this afternoon where I was attending the National Code Change Hearings to be with you this afternoon, and when I left for Dallas, I didn't pack a suit and tie. Let me also state that my attendance in Dallas, as well as my appearance here this evening, is at my own expense, and there is no City of Troy funds that are being used to do that. I have a series of documents and copies that I would like to provide to the City of Clerks so that she may distribute them to the members. And they will go along with my discussion this evening. I'm here to speak on Item H4, which is a contract with SafeBill to provide Building Department Services for the City of Troy. How did we end up at this juncture in the proceedings? Well, Council directed staff to implement Option 1 as laid out by the City Management last year in light of the budget concerns. Now as you may remember, Option 1 had two people that remained in the Building Department. I was never officially designated who those two people were, but it was generally presumed that the two people were the Director of Building and Zoning, and the Secretary to that department to administer the day-to-day operations under this option. The rest of the department would be eliminated through layoffs, and that the outside firm would be given the opportunity to bid on privatizing those services. Throughout those proceedings, both you and I were told numerous times that city staff would have the opportunity to submit a competitive bid with that, to be considered as part of that consideration. In furthering that cause, staff and consultants spent a good deal of time putting together a bid for those Option 1 services. Those bid documents went out in January of this year, and including pre-bid meetings, evaluations, interviews, and other things, the final pricing proposals for those were submitted on March 18th. Now when evaluating these bids, they're based on a number of factors. They're based on a percentage of fees for permits which are issued by the city. In addition, since we know that the Building Department Services includes things that do not include permit fees, there was also a 5% of time, or 100 hours, of staff time that was included at an hourly rate. Those pricing proposals were received on March 8th, and I've included a copy of the tabulation that was done from the Purchasing Department. The bid from SafeBill came in at $704,000, based on that evaluation. But that's not the entire Option 1 package, because we still have those two people in the Building Department, we still have other departmental costs that are involved with that. And that Option 1 number of departmental costs is $305,000, and I've provided with you a copy of the budget that puts together where that number comes from. It is in no small part the wages and fringe benefits of the two people in the department, but it also includes copiers, it includes postage, includes letterhead, includes training and education, includes all the other things that are necessary to implement that plan. When you add those two numbers together, between the SafeBill bid of 704 and the department cost of 305, the Option 1 cost is $1,009,000. And I'm here to tell you that city staff will meet and beat that bid. You've already approved a budget for next year, which has Building Department Services at $962,000, we're prepared to do that. So we're already under that number in terms of Option 1. But that's not what's before you this evening. What's before you this evening is a turnkey operation. Now where exactly did that come from? You've got 161 pages of documents this evening on H4. And I know it's a lot of things to read over the weekend, not much time to do all that, so I'm sure you wanted to just cut to the chase and get to the point where the city requested the turnkey operation, and where SafeBill's bid for that is. However, nowhere in that 161 page of the documents do you find those. As far as I know, there has never been a request from the City of Troy for SafeBill to provide a turnkey operation.
Go ahead mister.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I think it's important we get this information.
Thank you very much. I've tried to do this in under five minutes and wasn't able to. You might then look for, well, where is the bid? Because it's not in the 161 pages either. I've provided you a copy this evening. In an email from David Thompson to the Purchasing Department on May, or excuse me, March 22nd, four days after the bids were due, in a two-sentence paragraph, is where the turnkey operation bid is, and I'll read it to you. I've circled it on your copies. And it says, I quote, "If we were asked to be, provide the building official position, and additional administrative support needed, the percentage would increase slightly to 60, or to 80% of the fees. That percentage would provide the city with a turnkey building department." Now, on the 23rd of March, I was then told that that was the number that we were supposed to bid against. Now, the turnkey per operation wasn't defined, it wasn't scoped, it wasn't even verified that it was legal to do. And to be honest with you, for the last two months, staff and consultants have been trying to figure out exactly what that means. And the results of that work, or the last version of the results of that work, is what appears before you this evening. Now the difference between the SafeBill turnkey operation bid and the Option 1 bid, and under Option 1, they're basically providing inspection and plan review services. Under the, under the turnkey operation, they're providing everything. The difference between those numbers, when you apply those factors to it, is $44,000. And ends up with a total bid price based upon that analysis of $748,000 for the, for the year. And quite honestly, the Building Department staff cannot match that number. But it's interesting that what we determine is $305,000 worth of additional services, they have priced at $44,000. In addition, with the contract that you have now, they're now paying rent. I can tell you throughout the bid process, nobody said anything to anybody that they would have to pay rent to use our facilities. That rent figure, if you take the entire Building Department, is $42,000 in rent they would have to pay. So now the differences in services is about $2,000. Now, it's not our job, it's not your job, to make sure that a contractor makes a good profit on his bid. But there are many things in this document that aren't identified, that aren't clarified, that are going to be determined at a later date, or as the process goes on. If their profit margin with this additional services is $2,000, I can pretty much tell you where those arguments are going to go. Now, one of the other things that has come to the discussion is the issue of the building official. Excuse me, staff says in the memo that's before this evening, that they've looked at three different options on providing a building official, which is required to be an employee of the City of Troy. And they've actually picked one that I think might be legal to do. I'll give them that, it was rather creative. However, that person, one of my inspectors, that would be now assigned to the Planning Department, as the building official, if the mayor approves that, because the chief elected official has to sign the application, is going to have to review, approve, author, and sign every document that comes out of the Building Department. Every building permit, every electrical plumbing, mechanical, refrigeration permit, they're going to have to sign every violation notice, they're going to have to sign every C of O, and I don't know how they're, logistically, they're going to do that, and still do the 2,000 to 3,000 inspections that a Housing and Zoning Inspector typically does throughout the year. Now, what will happen on July 1? Well, on July 1, if the contract goes through, SafeBill's personnel will be in the Building Department, and they will have probably 70 to 80 inspections called for that day. Now, those 70 or 80 inspections that they get called in are going to be on permits that have already been issued. So there's no percentage of fee that's involved with that, they get paid on an hourly basis. Now, if those four inspectors, doing all those inspections for that eight-hour day, at the rates that are provided for in the contract, you will owe them $4,400 for that day. On July 2nd, okay, maybe they'll issue an electrical permit or two on July 1st that will have inspections called on July 2nd, but a majority of that day is going to be also involved on permits that are issued prior to July 1st. So you're going to owe them slightly less than $4,400, the day after that, slightly, slightly less than $4,400. My guess is that will continue on for at least the next six months. William Beaumont Hospital has a permit to complete their West Bed Tower, that's $195,000, of which they've only got approval through their budget process to complete one portion of it. It might be years before that project is complete. You will be paying for inspections at hourly rate on those from then on. What is my goal here tonight? First of all, my goal here is to make sure you're fully informed of how we got to this point and what the, what the situation is. My goal is to go back to Option 1 and allow the Building Department staff to bid against that, either at the 109, or excuse me, $1,090,000 that the Option 1 bid is, or at the 962 that's been approved in the budget. Now, I will say that if we go to the 962 that's been approved in the budget, I will be doing it, I will be proposing to do it slightly different than, than as was presented to you. The presentation was made to you with six staff in the Building Department, and a lot of money left over to pay for consultants. My goal is to have at least seven, and possibly eight, staff members in the Building Department, but still stay within the 962 number. I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. My flight back to Dallas doesn't leave till 6, so I've got the rest of the night.
Thank you. We may call on you when we come to that item, Mr. Steimak. The next person that wishes to speak is Brenda Adams White, and Brenda is the Staff Representative of Michigan Absme, Council 25. Good evening.
Good evening. May I give this to the clerk?
Yes, please do. And feel free to adjust the mic for, for your, yes, you're welcome.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to take a few moments of your time. I did not want to just come in and just interrupt a meeting without proper notification, that type of thing. The purpose of this, of my presence being here today is to, number one, is to make the City of Troy aware of what's going on, and the information that you're being provided right now, I will go over the reason why you're getting that information. We're here today to talk about the privatization of the golf courses, and why we should allow the current employees a chance to show how we can save job money and increase revenues. When we compare proposals, the current staff proposals is $287,800, better than Billy Tasters, which should not be overlooked, at a time when every dollar counts during the four-year contract that is on the table. The city employees will give back approximately $1.5 million, more than, more to the city. Our constant commitment to maintain quality course conditions while providing an affordable product is our number-one goal. By retaining the current golf course staff, the city will continue to have full control over all aspects of the golf division. With trying economic times that the city is going through, should not, excuse me, should not limit their return on the investment while paying someone else to manage their property. In agreeing to privatizing two golf courses, the city is allowing outside companies to manage their money, while paying additional $135,000 management fee. That could instead go towards the bond payment. The city employees are seeking a two-year opportunity to demonstrate how we can give the city a greater return than any private company can offer. That is why we're asking you to allow the current staff that are already here, the opportunity to show you that this is what can be done. You have people who are willing to go the distance. They're willing to work and do whatever's necessary to get the job done. If you look at the sheet that was just passed out to you, the golf course staff proposal, the 2010, 2011 projected revenue numbers below are based on two-year fiscal averages, 2007, 2008, 2008. two-thousand-seven, two-thousand-eight, two-thousand-eight, two-thousand-nine. Revenue projections for the final two months of the fiscal year two-thousand-nine and two-thousand-ten reflect these numbers as well. Revenue's figures do not include rent, investment, income. The two-thousand-ten, two-thousand-eleven expense numbers below have properly adjusted to reflect the elimination of the director of the golf position. Aside from the adjustment, no changes have been made to expenses since the golf course staff proposal was turned in at the end of January. Expenses are less depreciation and debt services. If I may?
Yeah, continue.
Please, thank you. The projected revenue for two-thousand-ten, two-thousand-eleven, and the projected expenses, all you have to do is take a moment and compare. I'm not going to go through each one of these numbers, but I just ask for you to take a couple seconds and look at the difference in the total. That's the bottom line. We're talking about money and how we can save money for the city. By keeping the current staff that you have already, you will be saving.
Thank you. Will you make yourself available to be here on this item, you and the others that are here on it?
I certainly will.
In case we have questions at this time?
I certainly will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have under public comment, Al Van Hootie. Did I say it pronounced correctly?
Good evening, Councilmember. My name's Albert Van Hootie. I, um, I'm referring on the temporary merchant business ordinance and fire stands-
Yes.
-that you have on the agenda tonight. I own and operate Fireboy Produce Company, and I want to thank you for allowing me to attend-
Would you want to adjust the mic for, yeah, there, so we can, thank you.
I want to thank you for allowing me to attend your meeting and address the issue of the produce stand. It just takes a great deal of money and a commitment to set up the stand. Um, our cu- our customers come to us on a daily basis at all our locations because of our fresh-picked sweet corn. Uh, we pick our corn fresh-picked every morning at our farm in Romeo. Uh, this is not a weekend farmer's market with many vendors. We have a commitment to quality and freshness to our customers, and that is why we have been in business for twenty-five years. If you haven't tried our product, I encourage you to do so this year, uh, at Oakland Mall. Please allow me to provide you a piece of fresh-picked sweet corn every day. I thank you for allowing me-
And, you know, this is not an agenda item tonight, it's simply an informational item, it'll be on a future agenda.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
All right, if you, uh, when is that scheduled for, the agenda, does it have a date in here? I'm trying to search.
Perhaps either Brett or Mark know?
There is not a specific date, but it, it could come to the next agenda. You know, what we were looking for is, is council's direction on whether you want to permit this type of activity or not. In other words, the, the ordinance would have to be changed to allow for the stand to stay up overnight, because currently it has to be torn down.
All right, well, when we get to that, which will be much later in the meeting, we'll, we'll be discussing that, uh, as a council. Uh, I just wanted to inform you that it's not an agenda item tonight. You're welcome to stay for the discussion, but it'll be quite some time before we get to it.
Okay, very good, I wasn't sure, so, thank you.
Uh, next we have Richard Peters, Mr. Peters.
Greetings, Council.
Good evening.
Folks of Troy, um, I just want to put, uh, support for our people in Troy that are working hard every day, and hopefully things will work out better for them. Um, I don't want to sound like Chicken Little here tonight, but, like mostly people, I'm aware of this oil spill, and I got some questions that I would like to ask, and I'm wondering about this-
Mr. Peters, move over by the mic so we can hear you, there you go.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. Um, I've got this oil spill that we see down in the Gulf, and the problem I have is, um, some questions I have, like, I remember read a derrick used explosives and dynamite to stop the, you know, before, a few years ago. I also wonder, um, with the use of, like, a heavy manhole cover or something that they could put over top of that thing, or the use of robots, maybe like you see on the moon where they use dirt to dig over to cover the top of it. I'm just wondering if we're just listing too much, uh, they're trying to save the oil so that they can keep using it instead of, uh, you know, stopping the emergency as it is. It seems, you know, I, I have to wonder, so those are kind of the questions, and I have to wonder if we shouldn't, uh, well, maybe think more, you know, maybe more open the range up for other folks, you know, so that we could maybe get some more input, so. Okay, that's, that's all right, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Peters. Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. A few weeks ago, I broke the rules of procedure, and for that I apologize. I do understand the need for, uh, procedure and rules, and I have been in your seat, and I know that without the rules, things can get pretty chaotic, so I do apologize for that.
And we always appreciate you coming, Mr. Savage, thank you.
I, I do recognize the need, but I believe the rules should have some kind of a purpose, and I believe the purpose of public comment should be to allow input from residents, some of which may be angry people merely let off steam. Others are voicing opinions on problems in the city and possible solutions. To allow visitor comments to be debated could result in chaos. But when council members were allowed to follow up on visitor comments, it showed that some of council were actually taking notice. However, that time period was eventually taken up by the city manager restating over and over again his position. In response to an item that management brought to the table, uh, April fifth, um, and the item was H seven, the question was asked, what is the dollar amount Carlisle-Wardman Associates received from the city of Troy in the year two-thousand-and-nine? And that, to my knowledge, was never answered. Also at that meeting, a Rochester Road businessman expressed an interest in revitalizing the businesses in that area. On two occasions, a resident, Mr. Burt, commented on management's plan to close the community center and suggested that should not be necessary. And it appeared from his comments that he had done a little research on the subject and may have some answers. But again, I never heard of any follow-up on that as to whether the guy was just blown off steam or whether he really did have some valid suggestions. On these and other resident comments, council showed little or no interest other than asking the city manager for his opinion, which usually leads to a ten-minute monologue on him giving his spin on the subject. You say you are looking for citizen input and involvement, but you really only want to listen to the people who agree with the management policies, which in the last ten or twelve years have not been very successful. My understanding of our form of government is, our elected representatives formulate policy for the common good of the people they represent. The management then administers these policies. I would suggest that one or two or more council members invite concerned citizens to just brief a brief meeting once in a while. Okay, in regard to the, uh, H eight in this, uh, today's, uh, agenda, rules of procedure. If this is another attempt to restrict citizen input, it could well develop into yet another contentious issue. And this has happened many times in the last ten years to my knowledge. The only time there is a problem with procedure is when there is a contentious issue. And that only occurs when management proposes an unpopular policy, such as closing the library while they're spending two-million dollars on an intersection. It seems to me that in the three years we had a different city manager, things were very quiet and peaceful around here. I don't make policy, I just comment on it from a different angle, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. That concludes those that signed up to speak on public comment, I see a hand though, Linda Klima.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, my name is Linda Klima. Well, now we have a budget, one that unfortunately will result in the closing of our library, museum, and nature center next year. We've all heard the pros and cons of the millage proposal that was on the ballot in February. As a democracy, we live by majority. The majority voted, that voted, said they didn't want an increase in our millage. Okay, but many in that majority thought they had the answers to keep our quality-of-life amenities. Unfortunately, most of what they proposed to our city leaders had already been tried or evaluated. Where are those people now? I know they're still bashing this council for all of the poor choices that had to be made to balance the budget, but I'd like to remind the citizens of Troy that the proposal which resulted in this budget had been reached by the previous council and was available for review way before the city council election. Where was everyone that knew what had to be done during the budget meetings that took place before today? I know a lot of blogs are continuing their efforts to drag this out and continue the blame. Those on council that weren't in agreement, what else can we do to have a balanced budget without expending more money? I know a lot of citizens want to blame the new council. However, did you know in reading the budget, notice that in oh-seven, oh-eight, and oh-nine expenditures exceeded revenues? Also, what about the unnecessary expenses that the city had to put out? For example, the Hooters debacle and refusing IKEA? And again, the charter amendment that was proposed as a tax cut, which ended up costing the city money and jeopardizing our triple-A bond rating? That was the time of the previous council. The situation is what it is, but how many citizens have taken the time to read the new budget and see exactly where we were and where we're headed? How many have looked at the surrounding communities and their millage rates? And did you know that over the last eight years, the number of city employees, full-time city employees, has gone down by one-hundred-and-fifty-eight positions? During the millage election, I mentioned to an elected official that the no-voters might win the battle but lose the war, and they did. They won their battle for no new increases in taxes, but lost the gems that helped make this city the stellar example it was. In essence, they lost the true city of Troy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that I missed on public comment? Mrs. Zambroski? Good evening.
Okay, good evening. Audrey Zambroski, and I've been here for thirty-one years. Uh, I voted no, and I'm on the library board, and I, yes, I did vote no. And it's because I get tired of reading every time I come to council meeting, and all of you know how many years I've been coming, and I've been very faithful, and I attend every meeting that I ever belong to, Historical Society, all of them. And I want to say, all I see is lawsuits, lawsuits and more lawsuits. Why do we get so many lawsuits? If we didn't have to pay out six-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars in cash for a lawsuit the last time, why are we getting so many? Is it our fault as taxpayers that get the lawsuit? I don't think so. I think in staff members, I think it's the council saying okay to things that maybe shouldn't be up. IKEA, that went down because they didn't like the colors that they used? Come on, but you don't tell us that, we have to find out the hard way. We go to the store and find out why you didn't build in Troy. You want the answers, find out all the answers. Don't just come up and complain and say, hey, it's the no-voters that did this. I would never have, I like John Zerlik, but I would never have hired him because of the fact that he left here, he got let go from his other job, and if we let him go now, we've got to pay off his contract. And I think we should have a clause in it that says we can get rid of him without having to pay off a contract. That's how he's making his good money. Now, if you want to talk about something, all you people that sit back here and go around and say, hey, you got to look and investigate, investigate the right way. We get too many consultants, we hire more and more consultants every year, why? Don't we have enough people that can come up with ideas without saying, hey, we got to get a consultant for this? We hired one to get the city manager, put out money for that, and what did we do? We slapped her in the face. I was there when you turned her down, and she did good work. She got seventy-five people from all over the country, interviewed them, brought them down to forty people, then down to twenty-five, and brought you the last few to pick from, and you slapped her in the face and said, we don't like who you pick. So who's at fault? Don't blame the taxpayers that vote no.
Is there anyone else under public comment? All right, then we'll go on with the, um, regular agenda of the, um, we have here, there are no postponed items, so we're going to regular business items. And our first item is alcohol sales at the Troy Community Center. And we have a resolution, um, that is before us, and we should have it on the table before we have discussion. Someone want to move that? Council on, oh, I'm going to ask council members, I know for many years, people said mayor, and you know, could hear the person asked to speak. Then we've started this where people signal. I don't always see people when they're signaling, because I'm trying to watch both ways, so if I could ask council's indulgence to go back to saying something verbally to get my attention, uh, it would help. I was going to bring it up when we talk about rules of procedure, but I think it would help all of us, because I inadvertently sometimes miss someone and call on someone else when it wasn't really their turn yet, and I didn't intend on doing that, so, if we could do that. So, if someone wants to move this resolution, would they please indicate so verbally?
May I, Mayor?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
Resolve that the Troy City Council direct the city administration to explore the requirements for the serving of alcohol at the community center and to formulate the procedures for alcohol service at the communities.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Deltermini, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion of the item?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Howardland?
Um, I have a, have a question, and, um, on the memo, there's a bullet point that says as follows. If approved, the city would terminate the existing catering contract with A and S Catering and rebid with alcohol as a service available by the contractor. Uh, this would be contrary to the way we handled both Sylvan Glen and Sanctuary Lake Golf Courses when we added liquor sales there and simply attached it on to the contracts. So I have two questions, one, why, and two, when will this happen?
And you're referring to the, is that the memo on page twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Zerlik, would you like me to call on Mrs. Anderson?
Please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, the, uh, addition of alcohol at the golf course was only insofar as it was to be served on the course. The, the alcohol was part of the original, um, concession agreement, or the food service agreement. Uh, the, when this happens is, is unknown. The request being made tonight is for, uh, staff to look into the whole policy and procedures in, in the event that council- in the event that council wished not to go forward with this. It was my, I thought it best not to invest a lot of staff time before we were sure that this was something that the council wished to do.
Councilman Howard, does that answer the question, or would you like some more clarification?
Well, no, I, you know, further on, on page twenty-two, it says if a more well-known caterer is selected from the RFP process, it is anticipated that they would be able to attract additional events to the community center through its brand recognition and ability to market the facility to new groups. A and S Catering is not known to patrons who are considering their services and provide little if any marketing exposure to the city. Now, I think that's somewhat unfair because it's not my understanding that this was part of the criteria used to judge their bid when they provided it. And I would hope that if we're going to go in that direction, that you somehow quantify that so that a bidder is, can ascertain whether or not they can have their own qualifications that meet the subjective criteria of the city. So in essence, while I agree with the initial concept of alcohol sales at the community center, because clearly there are banquets, weddings, and the like that would be able to use the facilities after this change of policy, and they can't now if they want to have the alcohol. It's my concern that we're wrapping a second issue into this issue that is completely unrelated, and therein lies my concern.
Certainly, that would be considered. The thought process, in addition to what is written in this, is that when the catering was bid at the community center, it was bid without alcohol. So a new specific occasion including that may turn out to be a different, a different set of results. But certainly, that would be something that is, would be considered before we bring that back to the council. And your thoughts?
Are there further questions or comments on this one?
May I, Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltermini?
If I might, while Mrs. Anderson is still at the mic. To take that a little further, is there some reason to think that A and I might not want to bid on a contract with alcohol?
There is no known reason that they wouldn't.
Okay, so they would be part of the process, and then should they not be awarded that contract if it went that far? Then we would cancel their contract.
If, if a bid went out, let me put it this way, let me rephrase it. If we were to cancel A and S's contract, it would be before any bid specs went out or there would be an evaluation of their ability to serve alcohol and fulfill the other terms of the existing contract and so on.
So what you're saying is we must cancel that before bids go out?
We would not have, we would, I think the existing contract calls for a ninety-day notice to them. So whether it would be before the bids went out or before the specs went out, likely would not be before they went out. There would probably, there would be an evaluation of whether they were capable or wanted to continue under those circumstances with alcohol and so on, and whether they were qualified to do it.
I think what we were questioning is whether we would have to cancel before we actually know. But this resolution, though, tonight is just for you to explore all the information.
Correct.
Come back to us. So some of those things will be answered when you come back with the report.
Yes, it is not my intention to be without catering services at all in the community center.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis?
I think this may be premature since you are indicating that this is really to get permission to explore options a little bit more. I noticed that there was some discussion about Meals on Wheels and obviously their use of the facilities at the community center. They would in effect be displaced somewhat if we were to cancel this contract. So I just want to make sure that as you're moving forward, that that still remains something that you're thinking about. And obviously, when you come back to present it to us, if you could give us information on.
Yeah, it absolutely is. Emerald Food Services, for those of you who may not know, operates the hot lunch program in the community center and the Meals on Wheels program out of, operates out of the community center. It's a launching site for the Meals on Wheels program. They are contractually obligated to have a site in Troy. Doesn't have to be a city-owned site. But there certainly is an interest on the part of Emerald to stay in the community center. If it could be worked out, it would be in the best interest of those seniors who get the congrat, get lunch or the hot lunch at the community center. It does, however, limit the catering opportunities as the existing caterer will tell you because they don't have use of the kitchen until one to two o'clock, Monday through Friday. So all of those things will be researched and explored, and we will present back to you what is in the best interest of the city operations or the community center functions.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, Councilman Howard?
The other thing I'm curious about, because it's my understanding that the way the, this particular bid work, when we, when Emerald essentially left the service of being the caterer at the community center, that the policy became that the bidder that provided the best return to the city became the chief provider, the primary provider. But other contractors would be able to match that rate. And so it seems to me that, and I must admit that this memo quite frankly confused me because like Councilwoman McGinnis, it seems to me that the issue at hand is simply whether or not your department and the city manager's office should proceed with, you know, changing policies so that we can allow for alcohol to be served on the premises. But there are all these other things that are brought into this memo. And it seems, as a councilman, I have to evaluate whether or not the resolution is the resolution at hand or if it's going to be interpreted by staff to be essentially a ratification of what's in this memo. And I would have to probably lean towards the latter because I know how this city operates. So if a, especially with this contractor who is on, I think, a one-year extension, is that correct?
The existing contractor?
Yes.
I don't know that for certain what the dates are to it.
It seems to me that the better process would be to simply go back to the other interested parties and offer them the same opportunity to provide services at the community center in addition to providing alcohol. That's the only difference that exists. The one, again, the sentence here that I'm really caught up on is this issue about there being a more well-known caterer. And it has absolutely, that sentence has nothing to do with alcohol sales. And I'm curious as to why we're pulling it into this issue.
Mrs. Anderson?
I don't have an answer to that other than the serving of alcohol and the sales of alcohol opens up the catering opportunities at the community center to a bigger group or bigger, bigger number of interested potential users. And so the marketing abilities and, and widespread known quantity of, or the A cater known in the area may be more successful in booking events than the existing contractor. But it doesn't have to be, I mean, this, this, the existing contractor does not have to be exclusive of the, of us moving forward with alcohol at the community center. I mean, yeah, we're really asking for, to go forward with the idea of being able to serve alcohol at some point at the community center.
Anyone else?
May I, Mayor?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
Well, we have, have issued a parking rep quite a challenge not that long ago. To remain open, revenues would have to be increased. I don't think we would be even having this before unless that challenge had been issued. We have a beautiful banquet center, which isn't often used because of the parameters we've developed. So this is simply an exploration into that. I recall that we were together at a community event just a couple of weeks ago with Troy Community Coalition and which an acclaimed caterer from the LAR. And that brought in a number of people and much excitement. And so although this memo simply includes some general information, the caterer in that case has made a huge difference in that venue and what's being offered just down the street. So in order to be competitive and to have a wider appeal, I think it's important that we do pass this resolution tonight and look into ways that we can better use that facility, increase the revenue so that opportunities for all of our residents and visitors are available to people who have an interest in that.
Well, my gist of the information that was provided by staff and from council comments is that we want to have the information come back to us that has the broadest range possible without excluding anyone who is interested now because we do not serve alcohol there. And yet, explore those possibilities, and I think that staff will do that without excluding anyone. That was your main concern, wasn't it, Councilman Howard, that in your comments about the memo? I think that they, perhaps there was too much information in this original memo because all we're doing is saying to explore the requirements of serving alcohol at the community center and formulate the procedures for alcohol service at the community center. And then that'll come back to us. Okay?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Howard?
The problem is that staff has essentially outlined their intention of how to proceed. And that includes the comment that if a more well-known caterer is selected from the RFP process, which is going to happen prior to the natural expiration of the contract extension, it is anticipated that they will be able to attract additional events to the community center through its brand recognition and ability to market the facility to new groups of people. A and S Catering is not well-known to patrons who are considering their services and provide little if any marketing exposure for the center. My concern is that, why wasn't this an issue when we extended their contract? And if it was, why wasn't anything done at the time? It seems to me that the rug is being pulled out from under the caterer because maybe, maybe the reason why they had a hard time marketing the center was because they couldn't have an event that included alcohol. Even if it was simply a temporary event liquor license, they couldn't even do that because they were prohibited from any alcohol sales on the premises. I think it's unfair of the caterer and everybody else because the ground rules are simple. The caterer is the highest bidder for return to the city, and anybody else can come in there and match it. The RFP process that is being outlined here includes perhaps some sort of room guarantee. I can't disagree that our rooms are underutilized, and I can't disagree with most of what Councilwoman Kirwin says because that is an issue. We need to make sure the facility is better used. But unless there's something in a resolution that tells staff otherwise, they pretty much have given it to us how they're going to proceed. I disagree with it. The resolution needs to be changed in my mind, but if we don't do that, it's okay. I'll just vote no. But just know that I am not opposed to liquor sales at the community center.
Further comments from council? Mayor Pretend Fleming?
I agree with Councilman Howard. Let's just make sure when we go out with the request for proposal and purchase and write this, that we don't preclude anybody, that we allow Emerald Food Services, that's what we're saying. Allow them to quote on it, and also that we don't overlook the Meals on Wheels. We want to continue to allow that in Troy. But if we just let these people quote, we write the quote, the request for proposal, and include them, let them have an opportunity, I think it's fine.
The staff has to signal too. I see two hands, but I'm not looking at hands there. Mr. Zerlik?
We'll be happy to include anyone in the bid.
Sure.
Mr. Lamorato?
Mayor and City Council, I think all we wanted to do, some of the information that was provided in the memo was to let you know that we're going to be looking at all aspects of serving alcohol and that no one is going to be precluded at this point. We're just looking at all things. So all of a sudden, this comes up in our P or so forth, no one is surprised. We just want to mention all the areas we're going to be looking at.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote please on the resolution before us?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltermini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. I think we gave staff plenty of information on that. Okay, Building Department Services, Safe Built Michigan Incorporated contract. Mr. Zerlik?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to speak generally and then turn this over to a number of individuals to approach this matter with more specificity. In particular, I'd like to have Susan Leirstein, our purchasing director, and Peggy Sears, our HR director, to come to the microphone. Also, David Thompson from Safe Built. And would then like to also have, if anything is missed, any holes would be filled in by assistant managers, John Lamorato and Mark Miller, if it's okay to proceed in that fashion.
Before you call them up, I didn't receive until tonight. I'm going to go back to my computer, so I had a question earlier today for you.
I believe all the questions are answered, Your Honor.
My question was, for both this and the golf course, when we're doing privatization, we were told many times over that the employees would have a chance to bid, I give a proposal, if they desired. They didn't have to, but if they, they would. Okay. Now, when we have bids on other things, we receive all the bid information, not only the one that won the bid, but on the other bidders. This time, I didn't have the information from the employees. And that's why we have people that had to come tonight under public comment and talk. And so I need to raise that again because that was the ground rule. They were going to have a chance to bid, and then we were going to get all that information.
On February eighteenth, I wrote a letter outlining the methodology that we were going to proceed with in terms of taking a look at providing services at the most cost-efficient level. And in that letter, I indicate that Peggy Sears, the HR director, is essentially responsible to work in conjunction with the department head and anyone else she deems necessary to see if we can match a bid. It's not an employee bid per se, it's not even a department head bid per se. It's our HR director who tags anyone she wants to, including the department head. So, but Peggy is here, and she'll be able to address that manner. But I'd like them to come to the microphone now, I'm not going to be talking too long. So if you three could do that, the microphone in the center, please.
I think it's come to this microphone because this one's easier to hear than that one.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
But essentially, and after listening to Mark's dymack, I've changed what I was going to say. And that is that no one likes the job that we're doing. Every day we come into work, it's not a good day. It's not a good day for us, it's not a good day for the people that work for us. When we talk to people and tell them they are not going to have a job, I mean, we can't compare their day in terms of how bad it is to the day that we're having. But it's tough at this point in our history to manage and be part of senior management for municipality given the reduced revenue streams that not only Troy's faces, but that we're all faced with in trying to become and remain economically sustainable. That said, I've assembled a core of individuals of senior management people. That consists of John Lamorato, assistant manager in charge of finances, Mark Miller, assistant manager in charge of services, Susan Leirstein, who's our purchasing director in charge of procurement, and Peggy Sears, who's in charge of human resources. All of us have more than advocacy for just one department. We have an advocacy for the city and need to make sure that any decisions that we make were here in the long run. I've also called on occasion Mr. Carlisle, who has about ninety municipal clients and has helped us in terms of methodology. Mr. Carlisle has agreed not to do any bidding per se, but to help us in developing bids for certain areas. for certain areas. In the case of the building department, we utilized a previous assistant manager on the interview panel, as well as Tom Marcus. And in the case of the golf course, I think it was Mr. Lamorato, Carol Anderson, and Jeff Bigler who were used. The golf course essentially was in place in terms of privatization before I developed the methodology. Methodology started with the building department. Speaking deductively, with the building department per se, it's an on-demand service, which means that it's unlike other areas. The police department, that's 24/7. There's calls that come in. There's investigations. The building department comes in.
Councilman Howard?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but if, Mr. Zerlag, if you could just talk into the microphone a little bit. It's very hard to hear over here. Thank you.
Yes. My apologies. Better?
Yes.
Okay. In the building department, that's an on-demand service, and so we developed specifications to be on-demand. Last meeting, there was a request to determine from an audit perspective what the subsidy was for building department operations, and Mr. Lamorato can explain what that subsidy was. The bid that we have indicates that there would no longer be a general fund subsidy for operating the building department. In fact, 20% of the revenues from building permits would go to the general fund as a revenue. That's the big picture. It falls deductively from that point in terms of the specifics. But I would like to have first, if I may, Susan Leirstein talk about the procedure that was utilized for selecting Safe Built, and then Peggy Sears to talk about the methodology used to determine the cost differential between Safe Built and the city of Troy. It's not really an us-them situation. It's Safe Built Construction Company and the city of Troy. I'd like Peggy's comments then to be buttressed by any comments that Mr. Miller may have as Mark Steimak's supervisor, as well as John Lamorato, who's in charge of all financing for the city of Troy.
Mrs. Sears?
No, first Susan, please.
Susan? Okay. Susan Leirstein. Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. The overview that Mark Steimak gave you earlier today is...
You know, I don't know if it's me. Are you all having trouble hearing everybody? Could we ask you to turn up the, like, you don't want it to squeal, but our sound system isn't desperately working.
Yeah, we're supposed to put that. Okay. Okay. I just want to allude to the fact that Mark Steimak kind of gave a very good overview of what took place in this process. I do want to clarify a couple of things that he said. We did go out for a, what we call a statement of qualifications first. It was a two-step process that we put in place and will put in place moving forward. It basically delineated the scope of services that the department needs. From that, we create a short list of qualified vendors, and from that list of qualified vendors, we request a proposal, a detailed pricing proposal, which we received from two firms. Safe Built's bid, as Mark alluded to, was not a turnkey operation initially, but on page nine of their submittal, under attachment one, there is a statement that needed to be clarified, which said, "We would anticipate that this percentage of fees would be all-inclusive." Kind of set a red flag to me. What does that mean in the context of what we had submitted initially? So that prompted the follow-up email that my buyer solicited from Safe Built. Since I was an evaluator in this process, I kind of stepped back from that. And she obviously got the additional information, and we moved forward from there. Because this is a request for proposal process, we have a due diligence to make sure that we get all the information from the vendor that they've submitted, and we review everything. We obviously didn't go back to PMI in this case, because their percentages are already higher than Safe Built to begin with, so there was no sense in asking them to compete in the same plane as Safe Built. So that became the new number to move forward with, and that's how we arrived at the $748,000 or whatever it was that's in this packet that he ultimately had to compete against. Aside from that, pretty much the procedure is no different than any other process that we've ever undergone. If you have any questions about the process, I can answer any of those.
I'm still having the same question that I had from Mr. Zerlag in my email. When we received all of the bid information received, Safe Built, where did we receive the city employee bid? I didn't get it till tonight.
You didn't get it? Okay.
No. And today it says...
I'm sorry. Well, the only... I wasn't here last week.
The proposal is attached. I don't have it.
Okay. Okay. It wasn't attached.
I don't know what the situation is here, but I can tell you that I want our bid proposal to be beyond reproach.
I understand.
And since we're having these questions from council, it puts us in a very difficult situation.
Right.
I'm sorry.
I understand.
But it does.
I understand. And at the time the packet was put together, I was not here last week to include any of that information, so it was omitted. And I apologize for that. Has it been provided now? Do you have the information or not?
When I look at what is on my table tonight...
You don't have that.
I don't have. I have the information that Mr. Steimak brought tonight. That's what I have. I don't have the others. And I know that it says something about the contract in June 1st, but I can tell you.
You didn't get it.
I'm very uncomfortable with this whole thing. I don't know how the other council members feel, but I hate to have you spend a lot of time, have the Safe Built people go through everything again, and we table it till the next meeting. We just assume, do it now, if we're not going to add apples to apples comparison.
If I may, Your Honor.
Mr. Zerlag?
The cover letter says, "By privatizing building department services, the estimated savings for the first year of operation will be $424,000," about 36%. I believe that was attached today in terms of the numbers, and I'm sure that Mr. Lamorato could explain that in conjunction with Peggy.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm not asking for staff to tell us whether they made the bid. I'm asking to actually see the bid proposal that they proposed. Like, we have other times with other bids over the years. I've called Councilwoman Howard numerous times, saying, "I've got to have all the bid information on all the bidders." Yes, we get the tabulation sheet and all that kind of stuff, but we're not getting it. And here we are, talking about privatization of building department, and then we're going to talk about the golf course. This is a big step for us.
Peggy knows him.
This is an issue for Peggy and John, Mark, to address that on, if you don't mind.
Oh, okay. I think they're all shaking their heads here, so I don't know what we want to do with this, Mr. Zerlag.
Pardon me?
They're all shaking their heads at the same thing that I'm saying. Yes. Council Kerwin?
I guess it's helpful, really, to understand it in an apples-to-apples thing, because some of the things that fall off when you privatize, including some of the expenses and some of the revenue that comes in, isn't in a handy chart to go down. So the overall figure isn't as helpful as some of that detail that we actually would like to see. And there are many things in Safe Built very attractive, including the termination of the contract, which is wonderful. However, before we get to any of those things in the contract, it would be important, imperative, I think, really, to see some of those things. There's no doubt, in the big-picture view, the on-demand makes a lot of sense. We are not building a lot. There are still permits issued to pay ten people to be there just in case all the time, seven days a week. It doesn't really make sense. But we're still not seeing it in an apples-to-apples piece.
If I may, Mayor and City Council, this was unintentional. We met, actually, this afternoon to review the questions that we received from City Council, and I would offer that there was misunderstanding in terms of what was to be provided. I think both of us had an understanding that you would have the memorandum that I provided to the consultant and to Susan that delineated the individual staff costs, and I apologize that that's not there.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
Madam Mayor, there's a correspondence which Ms. Sears is referring to dated March 31st, and it's the top of your yellow...
Yes, there is a memo.
So, Ms. Sears, your memo did get to them, which summarizes the proposal from, with Mrs. Sears worked with, building firm. So it is in front of you.
I was expecting to see the proposal with the luminous information that we received this evening and that we receive whenever we get bids from an outside firm. I was expecting to see the same kind of thing. Not, we weren't going to question everything that, you know, the purchasing department or the HR department has done, but it was just that this was a new road for us. We were going down a new road, okay? And so, looking at the bids and being able to look at, compare apples to apples, even though we're policy setters, there are times when we have to look at every least little detail. And I just wasn't seeing it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Really, this memo is all that exists in this regard. There is no RFQ or any other information submitted by the department.
At the time I met with the department to share the cost information that Safe Built provided, I was, and that it would be a turnkey operation, the department had indicated that if it was a turnkey operation, they could not compete, that it would have to be the level of staffing that they presently had. With that response from the department, I prepared the report that you have that delineates the cost, yes, the cost figures with the overhead included, and the difference between that and Safe Built's proposal. That there was no formal bid document, if you will, that was provided by the department.
I want to receive the information that the AGO position that the building code official must be an employee of the municipality. I think the whole game changed. And I think that, in my mind, it would have been building department submitted proposal from the employees. You've seen the one from Safe Built, because that's what we said was going to happen, that compares apples to apples, so that we could make a decision. Do we want to go with a firm to do this? And yes, they've said they'll hire some of the city employees if they want to be hired, and if they work that all out, we know all that. Or do we want to have the present building department employees have the bid? Because that was the original game, I thought. Mr. Miller? Mr. Zerlag? I guess you...
I'll start it off, Mark, in supplement.
All right.
The original game, if you will, was to try to balance a budget.
Yeah.
And balance a budget in conjunction with the governing body's authorization to proceed with option one. Also, to take a look at every department. Should it be eliminated? Should it be consolidated in-house or out-house? Should it be privatized? Should it be regionalized? We took a look at privatization of the building department. Mark can explain the conversations he had with his employee, Mr. Steimak, and I'm done talking. Again, I think it's worth repeating, when you look at a department that, and they're all excellent employees, I promoted Mark Steimak, when you look at a department that is here on an on-demand basis, one of our few departments that are, and you look at the subsidy that we've had to that department over the past several years, based on our audits, and you look at a proposal that says there will no longer be a subsidy from the general fund to meet your service demand, that is the issue, okay? It's not the issue of having the employees say, "Well, you know what? We'll all quit our jobs, become our own corporation, and, you know, take out workers' compensation insurance and liability insurance and buy our own vehicles and rent vehicles and so forth and so on." It becomes an issue of, do you want to subsidize a department with general fund operations, or do you want to have revenue come into the general fund for that operation? Now, there's a certain cascading approach, if you will, of revenue lines. And if revenue is a certain line, then the cost savings is great. If the revenue is higher, then the cost savings becomes less. The cost savings against essentially a consistent number of personnel being paid forty hours a week, you know, every week, based on being an employee instead of based on a workload. Again, it's these are very hard decisions. They're affecting people's lifestyle, but we have a threshold that we're already at in terms of a maximum millilitrate. We're not alone in this regard. We're trying to deliver services in the best fashion possible. Once we had essentially a number from the private sector to match, and Peggy Sears spoke to the department head along with Mark Steimak, it simply became a question of, can you, you know, can you guarantee, or how close can you come to our, you know, to these projections of a revenue line in terms of 80%? Does that mean in January and February and March, when there's hardly any activity, you're not going to get paid? It becomes very difficult to be able to compete unless you just take a look at your entire personnel costs and overhead costs and compare that number with a percentage of revenues that are going to come in based on permit fees and try to forecast what that revenue is going to be. If you go with the private sector, it doesn't matter what that revenue is, because there's not going to be a subsidy. That's all we're saying. So it doesn't matter how many pages upon pages of information you're going to get from our building department, our department. The bottom line is, when you take a look at what's being offered, 80% of permit fees to run the department, how is that going to be met? It doesn't take more than a page and a half. It really doesn't. So, Mark, you want to add something to that?
Don't mean to monopolize the conversation. If somebody else wants to ask a question, Stan?
Yes. I would like to just say one comment about early in the process. When Ms. Sears determined that the turnkey operation was a very viable option, we had a very difficult decision on what to do, and we talked a little bit this evening about option one and implementation of option one. When it became apparent that the turnkey operation was feasible and possible, we had a difficult decision whether we were going to look back on option one, which included the department head and secretary. And I will say that we brought Mr. Steimak in, and Mr. Zerlag offered Mr. Steimak the opportunity to manage that department, which would then utilize complete, you know, consulting services to do the day-to-day operations. But Mr. Steimak, I believe, said that he wanted to go out with the rest of the employees. So therefore, at that time, that's when we moved to implement the actual full turnkey operations, because Mr. Steimak informed us that he did not want to be the department head of a, which would be utilizing almost completely all consulting services.
Councilman Slater?
I don't know if there was going to be any more presentation. I don't want to interrupt it, but I have heartburn with privatization. So I have to, I have to ask some questions. Mark, you said that you, Mark mentioned that you had to add 300 and some odd thousand dollars on top of the 748. Could you, could somebody address that for me to argue one way or another on that? I don't know if that was referring to the two people that were going to stay.
Yes, that was. He was taking the 748,000 and adding the 300.
Which were the two employees that were going to stay?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Can somebody address that it's going to cost $440,000 starting July 1st, when Safeway, Safe Built takes possession, that there's going to be... That there's going to be some kind of a fee that we're going to have to use there?
There will be a lapse, if you will, because there will be permits in process that won't have been inspected yet at the time July 1st hits. So those are the fees that Mark was alluding to, that we could be paying, you know, a hundred dollars an hour, or whatever the cost is to manage those. But SafeBuild has, we built into the contract that we're going to negotiate a price based upon the hourly rates, and come up with a, you know, a reasonable amount of money that we're willing to pay, and they're willing to do the work for. I believe, David, you can add any other comments you want about which type of fees you're going to.
That's not in this contract already?
Pardon me?
That's not in this contract already?
This is in the contract you have, yes. That's we have to sign tonight.
You indicated that we would negotiate it after.
It's in there. That's the language that's in there. Under that, yeah, under that clause, is that we would negotiate a price based upon the hourly rates that are in the contract.
Mayor, I just would like to remind all of council that the fees have already been received for those permits. It is income.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you, I mean, do you want him to explain which types of permits he's going to collect?
No.
Okay.
I just don't want us to have to pay a large amount of money. If we're trying to save money here, and then it ends up costing us more money, I don't think anybody wants to do that here.
The dollar figure won't.
We're having trouble hearing. You're going to have to keep adjusting my.
I'm sorry. The dollar figure, I can assure you, won't reach that level, for one. Part of the process of the transition is to understand the status of existing permits so that then we can, you know, provide essentially a not-to-exceed figure to close out those permits. So it's a fairly standard part of the process to get through that transition of permits. And, you know, historically, I can assure you, the figure will be, you know, much lower than that estimate.
Do you want me to keep going?
Wait, Councilman Slater?
I noticed when I read this that none of our employees are included starting July 1st. Were they given an opportunity to interview? Were they given an opportunity to reject? Could you answer that for me?
Yeah, at this point, I can tell you that we haven't interviewed any of your existing staff. Those interviews begin tomorrow, and we're interviewing everybody. The names that you've seen in the proposal, we couldn't include your existing employees as part of the proposal. I know the question had arisen, you know, if you've already got, you know, these staff members available to you, you know, would you hire Troy's staff? Our intention is still, at this point, and will continue to be, to hire existing staff for as many of these positions as possible. So that interviewing process begins tomorrow, continues all day tomorrow, all day Wednesday. And then from there, you know, assuming, you know, that we've reached agreement on the contract, then we can extend offers to the employees from that point. But I can assure you that we will be hiring existing members of your staff.
Just one other thing, if I could say.
Slater?
You know, this appears to be pitting the administration against the employees, and I don't think that's what anybody wants. And I don't think we want to give that perception either. I certainly think that this council directed the administration to look into privatization, and I think that's what they did. And they're bringing it back to us to make a decision. So ultimately, that's going to be up to us. I certainly appreciate all the work that goes into this. I know it's not a pleasant situation for anybody. It's not for me. But the only way that I even voted to go look at this was that we were going to save four hundred and some odd thousand dollars. And I have to be assured that that's still going to happen, or I cannot vote in favor of this.
And my problem with this whole situation is to make sure that the situation was administered as we thought it was, and that the employees truly felt that they were given a real chance to bid, and comparisons were exact on everything, and on the rest of the privatization that we've been talking about, not just this one. And that's where I'm having some problems with this. It's not, it's your company, sir. And I just have to express that, just because that's how I feel about it. Okay, Councilwoman Kerwin, are you next, or Mayor Proton Fleming, I think?
Yes.
We've got to get used to the voice and not the finger.
Thank you. Is it possible to get a run-out of those permits that we already collected compared to what your fees are going to be to inspect? You know, because they may have hourly rates. But we know now how many, what projects are still open. Mr. Steimak indicated there are some rather large projects open. And Beaumont's a larger. But when we have the revenues, some of that already collected, so I just want to know, we got the revenue collected, can we project what the expense is going to be to administer those?
I'm not able to project that, standing here this evening, without an opportunity to, you know, view the status of those projects. As I mentioned during the transition process, that's one of the things that we'll evaluate. Typically, when you look at, you know, the biggest impact are going to be those large commercial projects. You know, usually, the closeout on, you know, the residential projects, the commercial tenant finish, those types of things, is fairly insignificant. You know, so really, it's focused on those large commercial projects. And, you know, once we have a chance to see how many open permits there are, the status of those projects, you know, then we can make a pretty clean determination.
Mayor?
Mr. Miller?
I'd just like to inform council, through Mr. Steimak, we have already produced, you know, a list of all of those outstanding permits, and we have been looking at them. And this whole subject has been part of our negotiations with SafeBuild. There's been a bit of concern what to do with those.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Howard.
Do we have a total amount of fees that have been already paid to the city on those?
Mayor, I don't know enough time ahead, but yes, we maintain those records.
Well, I think one of the things that council should be provided with at some point in the very near future would be the amount that have been paid on those fees, and the estimated labor hours left to complete those building services, so that we can ascertain what our additional costs are. Because that's an integral part, because you're going from a fixed-cost system to a variable-cost system.
Councilwoman Kerwin, I think was next. I heard her voice.
Tracy has a follow-up. I don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have a follow-up? Mayor Proton Fleming?
Following up what Councilman Howard has said there. I think our goal should be, in a projection, looking at what revenue we've already collected, and you're saying that we're going to keep twenty percent of that going forward. Our goal should be to keep at least twenty percent of those revenues, the revenues exceed your expenses by no less than twenty percent going forward when we do those. Do you understand what I'm saying? There should be a profit.
On the existing.
Of the existing. Right.
Councilwoman Kerwin? I think there were two things that have come up. One is a process question. I think we've all talked about that process question. Are we having a fair and equitable process for our employees? That's a separate question. The other thing that we're living under, and our community has spoken loudly and clearly about this, is that we have to streamline. We have to do a better job. And we're uncomfortable, I think, with the impact of that. We have to be service-oriented, not job-oriented. It is the service, and this is a new service. It wasn't anticipated to be done like this. But it is a service that will no longer be a subsidy. It will, in fact, be adding some revenue. And that's where we are, folks. So I think an understanding of that, a clear understanding that that is the direction, that's what we not only told this city manager, but after the Zucker Report, the same thing. That's why we aligned the departments to begin with. So that's where we are. I am saddened to lose any of our employees. However, the contract as written and presented is a good one, and benefits us in the city. It is streamlined. It is a better use of our dollars. Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Balthamini?
Question for management, if I would. I think it will require someone from administration. Something Mr. Steimak said dovetailed with something I learned last week. I have a friend who is a building inspector in a smaller city than ours, and he has been designated as the building official in that city. And in the last four months, he has built up a hundred and thirty hours in comp time because of permits he can't get done. The signing, the paperwork, all of the stuff that goes with him as building official. So with the thirty-some-odd permits that were handled in Troy last year, what is our expected overtime for our building official to get all that done?
Mr. Zerlag?
Mark will respond.
Well, first of all, he would not be getting overtime. Second of all, that it is SafeBuild's responsibility to prepare and make that code official's job easy. Because in effect, SafeBuild would be responsible for the whole turnkey operation. And the official that would be in the building department would have work to do, yes. But we fully expect SafeBuild to make that person's job easy as possible. In fact, I would, I think it would be good to hear from Mr. Thompson to indicate how he would, you know, visualize how he would make that person's job easier in providing the turnkey operation and working with the code official.
Well, and while I understand all of that, you said, yes, this person will have another job, other responsibilities, inspections and the like. I know that you hand me, you don't, Cindy Stewart does, fifty certificates to sign. I sign them. I have nothing to read. No contract to make sure that I'm signing the right thing on the right line. It says, "Robiny Beltramey," I sign on that line. It's a no-brainer. And it will take me ten to fifteen minutes to do that, and do nothing else. Thirty thousand times, I'm back to, how long is that going to take? That's my question. No matter how you streamline it, how long is that going to take?
Mayor, I don't know exactly how long. We'd have to research and determine that. We have not done it.
Just for, and it's difficult to answer that question, you know, fully, you know, until you actually go through the process. I can tell you with other accounts that we have, other cities that we serve, we do have other instances where a city employee is designated as the building official, responsible for signing, responsible for Board of Appeals, responsible for, they have functions. In a lot of cases, those are the community development director, and a couple of cases, they're actually city manager position. And none of them are exactly comparable in size. The nearest is about half the size and the half the activity of the city of Troy. And the last time we spoke with the city about the contract, about the building official responsibilities, it was taking their community development director about ten percent of his total weekly time. So, you know, four hours a week for roughly half the activity. You know, but I can't say that that will be directly applicable. I can't say, tell you I'm confident it'll be eight hours a week, but.
No, but it's good information to have, that we're looking at one guy that we expect to do inspections that's going to be sitting behind a desk a day a week. And maybe more, maybe less, but a day a week. And, no, it's not overtime, it's comp time. That's still city money. We end up paying them for it. So let's not treat it like, I am a little troubled, Mr. Thompson, since we're chatting.
Yes.
In answer to Mr. Haralek and Mayor Proton Fleming's questions, you said, "Don't know exactly what that would be, that it would cost an hourly rate to finish out those permits." And yet I hear that, as part of the negotiation in the bid process, there is an existing document. So I'm wondering, I'm trying to do my due diligence, and I don't get the feeling that you've done yours. That's where I am.
The information that they're pulling together on the existing permits and the status of those permits, once that's finalized, then I can, you know, we'll be able to have a very firm number. The option exists also not to do it by an hourly rate. We can actually use a percentage of fees approach for those projects as well, so that you don't run the risk of it being, you know, just an ever accumulating sum. So to do it right takes a lot of time and exploration. And the answer today is different than the answer will be on July 1st. You know, so it's also a moving target. I can just tell you that it's part of that evaluation process, part of that transition process. And it's just not something that we can nail down, standing here at this minute.
Thank you.
What's to go next? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I just want to point out that I think a lot of the questions that we're asking at the council, and a lot of the questions that I saw coming in while I was trying to eat dinner before the meeting, are really more about process questions. And I think the reason that you're getting so much from us is that this is really the first big contract that we're looking at in terms of privatizing. And it will set the tone for things that we do after this, including something that's directly after this on the agenda, for the golf course. And I think my biggest concern is that, while it's not our job to manage the day-to-day and the grind, everything that you have to do to evaluate these things, ultimately, we have to feel comfortable with the process so that we can make these big decisions. And I would really hate to have half the council not approve something like this because they are concerned about the process, when in reality, you could have a group of people up here feel comfortable about the process and realize that the numbers are the numbers, and that in the economic climate that we're dealing with, it's the way that we have to go. So I think it would behoove everyone, management as well, everybody that's dealing with this, to set up some more defined parameters as to how this is going to go, or what information we should be expecting, or exactly what we're expecting city employees to be able to participate in, so that we can answer those questions, we can expect to see them with every contract that may be coming down the pipe, or, you know, every discussion that we have about the different departments. And I think right now, that's something that I'm not comfortable with. And it doesn't mean that I'm not comfortable with having to make this difficult decision if it gets to that point. But, you know, right away, we've got two different issues that are on the agenda tonight. I don't feel like they've both been presented in the same way. I think we would get city employees, who understandably right now are angry and upset, and want to make sure that they're given a fair chance, and I do understand that doesn't make anyone's job any easier. But I feel like even within the two different areas that we're looking at, they've been approached a little bit differently. We've been provided different information. And while we may be able to process that, I don't think it gives the impression to anyone else that's watching, following, obviously, the city employees that have jobs that are at stake. I don't think it gives them the impression that we're following the same set of rules for everyone. So I really, at this point... So I really, at this point, would not want to move forward if there are still people that have questions with what the process is going to be from here on out, because it is the first contract. I would rather have all those questions answered in a suitable amount of time, so that we can make our decision and go forward, and not have people that are just uncomfortable with some of these procedural issues, that shoot it down, and then you've got two conflicting, you know, two conflicting messages that are coming from council.
Mr. Sears, you want to come to the mic?
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments. I especially appreciate Councilman Slater's acknowledgement of how difficult this process is for us to undergo. It is very difficult to make a decision that you know is going to impact a lot of lives personally, people that you've known for many, many years, and it's not one we take lightly. I understand the perception that this particular privatization effort was handled differently. We are going through a learning process, but we are trying to follow a consistent methodology. This one was unique in that there was no formal document provided to give the appearance of a consistent application of the methodology, if you will. But I can say that we tried very hard to get the department to think outside the box, to try and arrive at some kind of way to compete with what the private contractor was There were a couple of choices, I suppose, if they, if the employees could have agreed to a fee for service, a permit-based fee, for example, that's a difficult nut to swallow when you're not used to that kind of a lifestyle. And I can see where it would be difficult for a department head to provide a proposal that calls for cutting some of his people out. So I don't know if that was part of it, but my job was to look at the proposal that they provided, try and encourage them to meet the demands, if you will, that were set in the quote provided by the contractor, and then to compare those. But I understand your concerns with the process, and we are also concerned with those. But I just wanted to make sure that we commented on administration's concern that the process be handled fairly. We don't want to let employees go if there's an economically efficient way of keeping them.
Madam Mayor. Mayor Proton Fleming?
Yes. In that regard, in being fair and giving the employees an opportunity, I refer to the email from Mrs. Hamilton, we just got this package from Mr. Steimak tonight, to Mr. Mark Steimak dated March the 23rd, where he was given the turnkey operation number of $748,500 plus building maintenance and so forth. And his completed proposal was requested by the end of business on Friday, March the 26th. He received this on Tuesday, March the 23rd. Was he given any extension of time, that's three days, to make a decision, absorb that, and come back with a proposal? And I know we want to be fair. Is three days ample? Was he given any extension to that?
Mrs. Sears?
Even beyond that timeframe, we met with Mr. Steimak on several occasions, Mr. Miller and I did, and tried to work through possible alternatives. It wasn't a matter of just adhering to a deadline. I think that Mrs. Hamilton was attempting to get a process going and make sure things stayed on track, but if a deadline of this magnitude is missed, we certainly would not have stopped the employees from moving forward with a proposal.
Madam Mayor.
Did I confuse you? Councilwoman Kerwin?
And it's apparent from the contract, if things did become more complicated, how insurance was going to be handled, all of those different paragraphs, which weren't anticipated, and gee, that's right, how would I handle insurance? I mean, that then isn't a 748, or that kind of a number. It's, gee, I don't know how I would be able to do that. And that's what was a reference that came up earlier. None of that was anticipated when the idea was, we'll see if we can just match it. The same thing with cars or anything else. The use of space, how that came about was not initially. So again, so even when I say you could make it apples to apples, I guess it would be making blank charts, and I don't want to overwork staff, but there's some things that we know that could not match up at the end. And that's why when you say the realization was, it took a one and a half page memo. But it would be better for all of us, I think, to be assured that we didn't end up with the drama that we saw tonight, where people are feeling misunderstood, and we're wondering what, if there's some oversight that we need to have, that we currently don't have. And we need that assurance as well. Again, this isn't going to be comfortable. We knew that when we had to cut the eventual 22 million, that this involves a lot of people.
Mayor. Did you have a response, Mr. Thompson?
If you wouldn't mind, I'd just, I'd like to comment generally on the process. You know, I know that I'm a little bit jaded, I have a vested interest in, you know, in the outcome. But I've been through a number of these processes with cities, counties, communities across the country. I'm in the middle of this process with a number of other communities very close to here. And the effort that I've seen staff at all levels go through here is unique, more complete, has been more of a process than I've seen in just about any other location that I've been involved. To the point frankly, where, you know, the fact that you're allowing staff to come back, look at the proposal that we submit, and then give us their proposal on top of that, you know, frankly, I look at that and think, God, that's unfair, you know? Unfair to the point that you're giving staff the opportunity to see exactly what it is that they have to compete against. And, you know, in the discussions, in the communications, you know, the emails, you know, and Mark has been incredibly professional, incredibly involved throughout the process, you know, certainly understand how difficult it is for all of you, how difficult it is for staff. But I can tell you from our perspective, not only has the process been fair as a private company, it's been fair to a fault. I mean, it really has at times challenged us. But anyway, I just want to share that observation.
Your Honor.
Well, yes, Mr. Zerling?
Just another general comment, and that is that, and it's human nature, every time something comes before you in the public venue...
We're still having trouble hearing you.
Wow, I'll see if I can get this fixed by next time we meet.
Don't get you a new voice, John.
But, yeah, this one, yeah. Every time we're going to meet in the public venue, and someone's job is at stake, I guarantee you, it's going to be drama, guaranteed. There are many people that you will never see come to this meeting because they're going to have their jobs eliminated. In this instance, and in the golf course, the jobs need to be eliminated if you want to save money, quite frankly. If you don't, then we'll keep the jobs. But they'll be eliminated with the opportunity to interview with the company that's taking them over. In many other areas of the city, where Peggy Sears and John Lonnerato and Mark Miller and I meet with employees, they don't have that option, and they're not going to come to the microphone, because it's not a decision to be made by the governing body. You already made that decision by approving the budget. And there's more employees in that boat than there are in this boat of the building department and the golf course combined. You just need to know that.
Okay. Councilman Haralack? Do you have questions for these people?
Well, I have a follow-up to that comment, Mayor. And I think that goes to the heart of my objection to this whole process. And I think that, with respect to jobs and what have you, I think that employee groups should be afforded the opportunity to cut their salary and benefit packages to the extent that they can protect the jobs of everybody in the employee group. And as a matter of fact, if you want to rent an auditorium for a day and bring every single employee in this city to that auditorium, and provide everybody an opportunity to take an across-the-board salary and wage cut, and they do that, and you want to go back for a more moderate tax increase, you'll have my support. But I think that speaks to my issue of shared sacrifices. And I think that I don't, yeah, I do have a problem with the process, and I think it is pitting people against each other. And I think if we can put everybody in the same boat, it'll make this process a lot quicker and easier. That's my opinion. That's where I object to that statement that was just made.
And if I may respond.
Yes, Mr. Zerling?
Early on, and we're still doing this, we're trying to achieve concessions from all six labor unions, and as well as the employee and class, as well as the exempt and classified groups of the city, and we'll continue to try to do that. Hopefully, there'll be a time when the governing body unanimously agrees that the concessions are such that you'll all endorse a mileage increase.
Thank you. I would like...
Could I just ask one more question?
Yes, one more, and then I'm going to call Mr. Steimak up again, because I want him to respond to something that's on here.
Right.
Go ahead, Councilman Slater?
Did I hear you say that you were willing to look at, after July 1st, a potential change where you would give the city 20% and keep 80% on permits that were outstanding at this point, as opposed to charging the hourly rate?
That is absolutely a possibility, yes.
Well, I would feel much better if we did that myself.
Then what I'd like to do then, once the contract is approved, will be to evaluate existing permits, and maybe we can make that essentially an addendum then to the contract, separate item in the contract. We could even make it a separate contract. Either way, works fine, but we'll go through that evaluation...
Great.
...and give a percentage figure instead of an hourly figure.
You're calling on Mrs., you want Mrs. Bloom to respond? Mrs. Bloom, is there a attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just indicate that this contract does not currently provide for that option. It is based on an hourly rate at this point in time. So if this contract is approved, there is nothing that would give you leverage to guarantee such an arrangement could occur. You can always have amendments to the contract, they need to be mutually approved, but that would be required in this instance, because the only thing that's called for at this point is that any work that is not with, that it's an existing permit application, and that is based on an hourly rate, and those hourly rates are set for 2018.
But we could change this contract before it's signed.
We could do that, we could continue to negotiate before it's signed, but once it's approved, that is your option.
Okay. I would personally like to see that.
Pardon? Well, because remember, I'm going to hear people saying something out loud if I'm going to call on them, so if they're not going to do that without calling on them. Okay, thank you. Can you three go back over there? We may have more questions, but I have to ask Mr. Steimak a question.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I comment? If that is the route we might want to take, is this 80-20 split that we have, we'd also want to make sure that whatever work has already been done, it would be on the remaining portion of it. So it'll be prorated along with that, not just strictly 80% or 20% of whatever the actual permit fee was. We'd have to prorate that out, see what work has already been done.
Okay.
And that makes sense.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
There seems to be consensus that is volunteered, and that would come under a...
Well, I think it needs to be negotiated for the contracts, I make, I don't want to sign until we've got all the ducks in order. Okay, Mr. Steimak, could I ask you to come forward again? Now, I know it's unusual for you to come here as an individual and still be in the department, but you did bring us some paperwork tonight. We did have things to say at the beginning, and the way our rules of procedure are now, to call on you at the beginning, which was fine. We have this memo that says, "The proposal submitted by SafeBuild Michigan is $424,507 less than the current cost to provide inspection and plan review services." But that was dated March 31st, 2010. Do you have...
No, I don't have a copy of this. Mayor, I...
Yes. Because that's where my question goes, okay? My goal in all of this is to provide the best service that we can in building department services for our residents and businesses. And if the city employees were able to bid and be successful in order to compete with a private company, I was willing to look at that. I just want to make sure, and I think that Councilwoman McGinnis expressed it very succinctly, and that is, that the process has been a little bit thorny, and that our goal is to make sure that everybody feels like they had an equal opportunity regardless of what the outcome is. And I hope that you understand that.
Certainly.
I know that you do, but I just have to express it again.
If I may, if I recall the question directly. Regarding the memo dated March 31st from Peggy Sears to Susan Leirstein, basically, this is a printout of our existing staff wages.
Right.
And that's what it is. As well as the overhead number that was prepared by the city management that is referred to in a couple of locations on the memos that I gave you called core service allocation. I should note that this memo, as well as the memo that was in your agenda on April 5th, as well as the memo that I believe came to you as well, has my name nowhere on it. It is not signed by me, it is not submitted by me. Within the packet of the information I gave you this evening is a two-page printout that has the Option 1 numbers on it. That's literally a printout from our budget. That's how we, with the software system that we have, that we develop the budget. If you look at the first column, it says "budget." That's this year's '09-'10 budget. The request officially was the pre-furlough day number that was submitted from the building department. What is shown as proposal actually is the post-furlough day number that was submitted. Through the budget process, through the approval process, that number, if you look at it, of $1.292 million, was the budget that I originally submitted to the manager's office prior to the finalization of the budget. Through the budget process, $330,000 came out of that budget. So that's where the $962,000 that you approved as part of your budget came from. But in that number of the services, in addition to those core services, there's no phones, there's no cars, there's no computers, there's no anything. So that number doesn't work no matter where you go to it. All that is, is wages, all right? So that's not a valid number. Now, quite honest with you, in order to accomplish the matching of the turnkey number of $1.019,000, it requires the elimination of two positions from the building department that are currently there, and it requires a 6% across-the-board cut in salaries. Furlough days don't work in the building department. We are down to a minimal staff. Every day that I have a staff member out of the office affects our service. So our position is, we would rather take a flat salary reduction as opposed to dealing with furlough days, because it just hampers our ability to provide services. So that's what it would require in order to match the Option 1 number. To get to the 962, either we have to eliminate three positions within the department, or we're going to still eliminate two positions and take a larger cut in salaries across the board to accomplish that. My employees are ready to do that. I have some, in order to match a $748,000 number, requires the elimination of two employees and the reduction of 25% of the salaries across the board for the employees. I have some employees that are ready and willing to do that. But I think it's, well, a couple of things. It puts some of them below the minimum salary level for their position, and it further puts them in a position that is going to be difficult later on when we go to four days a week, which is out in the 12, 13, or 13, 14 position of the budget. So now, have I answered your question?
Yes, you have. Now... Now, the last negotiation discussion that we just had with Mr. Thompson about what would be changed in the contract as far as the percentage?
Yes.
What does that do to affect what you folks would-
Well, Mr. Thompson was very accurate in stating that the number of outstanding permits is something that varies day-to-day. I ran a report for Mr. Miller in, I believe it was the third week in April, and we had just over $400,000 of active permits. Now, an active permit is one that has been issued within the last six months but has not been filed out. It may require just one more inspection to final it out. It may be that they haven't put the shovel in the ground yet, but there is some portion of the work that is still out there outstanding. I ran that report again last week, and we're up to $450,000. July 1st, since we'll be in the middle of homeowner season, my assumption is that number is gonna be probably closer to $500,000 or over $500,000 of active permits. There also are a number of inactive permits, and that means those permits were issued more than six months ago but haven't been filed out. Now, honestly, when I run that report, I get a lot of old permits and a lot of dead files and things like that. Technically, the number is 900-some thousand dollars, but many of those permits are outstanding permits that need to be closed out, that just has some paperwork along with it. But one significant outstanding one in there is a $195,000 permit for Beaumont that literally they haven't started yet.
All right. I want to give other council members a chance there. Any of you who wish to ask Mr. Stein a question?
Mayor?
Councilman Horlach?
Could we talk a little bit about this Beaumont contract? Has the city collected any revenue? Has the city collected any money on that?
We've collected $195,000.
I'm sorry, how much?
$195,000.
Okay, so about, let's say, $200,000 roughly.
$200,000.
Which means that we're going to, and has your department spent any labor hours on that?
There was a two-part permit, if I may. There was a two-part permit. One was for the foundation shell of an addition to Beaumont Hospital, and that permit has, for the most part, been completed. The $195,000 permit was the completion of that four-story addition, and Beaumont has just gotten the approval to complete one floor of that, which they really haven't, they haven't completed it yet. They're in the process of doing it. We're doing inspections probably this week, probably possibly even today. But a majority of that project has not even been authorized to start work from Beaumont.
So if we were gonna pay SafeBill 80% of that minus, let's say, maybe 80% of 80%, that's a cost that we wouldn't otherwise have to spend because if we have your department as operated by the city, it's a sunk cost, and you basically do as much work as comes down the road in a year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. And so would you say that in order to make things comparable, to get a realistic number of the amount of money that the city has to expend in the next, let's say, through the life of this contract, you have to include that as a cost for the SafeBill contract?
That is correct.
Right. And one thing I would like you to do while you're at the podium perhaps is to just, again, walk us real closely, step by step, down that road so you can show the city council that you believe that your department can do the services in-house for no more than it would cost us to contract out with SafeBill.
Well, the revenues collected by the city for the permits, once again, in a very bad year using 2009 as a benchmark. It was a record bad year. The Building Department collected approximately $887,000, actually a little bit more than that because there's some other fees that we collect that are not permit fees. Those fees are then used to fund the department, or actually, let me back up, those fees go into general fund. The department's budget comes out of general fund. And in some years, we equal that number, some years, we don't. There have been years that we've put in excess of $1 million into general fund that we haven't used. If I may, and I guess, and I don't have the document. Regarding the audit of the department and the subsidy to the department, I don't have the document, but I presume that that subsidy includes housing and zoning. Up until this budget year, housing and zoning has always been included in the Building Department budget. It's, depending on which budget year you go to, somewhere between $300,000 and $370,000 annually to fund housing and zoning. So if you look at those audit numbers, you have to deduct that number to get a comparable Building Department number because those functions are not. I might add that those numbers are probably gonna go up because part of the inspections that we do that, you know, aren't paid for by permits are inspections for housing and zoning. And I presume those are gonna get charged now as SafeBill does those, or SafeBuild or some other private company were to do those inspections. Anyway, so the Building Department collects those fees, the money goes into general fund, our budget comes out of general fund. If I understand that correctly, you want me to try and document how I believe it would happen with a privatization company?
No, how you would do it. Isn't that right, Councilman Horlach?
Yes. It sounds like the total cost in order to match the SafeBill proposal would have to be, using last year as a benchmark, if you will, $720,000 because it's 80% of 900,000, plus about $300,000 to $350,000 for the zoning inspectors and the building code chief official. So that brings us to about, roughly about a million to a million fifty. Does that sound about right?
Well, that is, although SafeBill's, two things. SafeBill's numbers, SafeBill is not proposing to provide housing and zoning inspection services.
Right.
So I don't want to try and mix that up. The budget proposed for the Building Department for building inspection services, inspection, plan review, and enforcement of that, in this year's budget that you just approved last week, is $962,000.
I know we're right in the middle of all of this, but before we make a decision and have a vote on anything, council usually takes a break at nine, and we are at 9:45. So I would like to recommend a break for us and come back. It doesn't mean that we're, we still may have some questions for you, Mr. Stein, or for somebody else on this.
I will still be here.
I've had signals from several people. We need to take a break here, okay? We'll come back in ten minutes.
Okay, we're back at the table. And I had a request from Mr. Zurley to say something else. Councilors, any more questions here? I said I'd call on him again.
Mayor.
Councilman Harlock?
Actually, I wanted to finish.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
... a train of thought if Mr. Steimak.
Yes.
I just wanted to kind of start from A to Z, so to say. Not that it's going to be 26 steps, but just so we can get an understanding here on council, how staff would be able to provide us with a cost situation which would be equivalent to that which we would have if we contract, excuse me, contracted up with SafeBuild. So if you wouldn't mind doing that, so just so we're all on the same page. Because I know a lot of things have been kind of discussed piecemeal. So if you would kind of bring it all together for us, that would be great.
I will try. And let me state, you know, a number of the issues that we've been discussing regarding outstanding permits, that is a transition issue. That is things that are going to be, have to be dealt with this year. Two years from now, five years from now, there shouldn't be transitional permits that are still out there that should be done. And at that point, at least according to the proposal of the contract, would be a straight 80 percent. But this year is certainly going to be a difficult one to attempt to transition between the current building department staff and a private company. With regards to new permits that come in, the contract as proposed is fairly clear that 80 percent of the permit fees, plan review fees, and CFO fees that are collected would be going to the private company. The difficult task is dealing with the outstanding permits. Once again, whether you do it by a fee structure, you still, literally as Mr. Thompson indicated or possibly Mr. Miller, you almost have to look at each one individually to determine a point in time of how much additional work. If you do it based on an hourly rate, you're going to know how many inspections were done at a, on a particular permit. Somehow, you're going to have to set up an accounting method and an auditing method to know that out of those 18 inspections that an inspector did that day, that seven of them were on old permits and 11 of them were on new permits. And so out of those seven on the old permits, well, how many hours did that generate? And therefore, how many, how much by the hourly rate that they're, that they're going to be paid? I think in accordance with the contract, Mr. Miller is responsible for that, and I wish him well. Because it's going to be a very difficult task that's going to go on for some period of time. In terms of what the, how the building department will compete with that number, we compete with that number based on our budget. Regardless of the amount of work we do, our budget is the same. Once again, the budget as approved by council at last meeting is $962,000. And we will do whatever tasks are assigned to us, whatever requests for service comes in, at that amount. Now, I should note, and of course, once again, it's a moving number. It's an ever-changing number. Through the first four months of calendar year, 2010, we've done 330, just over $330,000 worth of permits. If that carries through at that rate, will be basically a million dollars in revenue in this calendar year. Whether that carries through to the fiscal year, I don't know. It's difficult to tell. But once again, even in our worst record year of history, and when I shouldn't say of history, in the last 20, 25 years, in our worst year, we brought in just under $900,000 worth of revenue. So in terms of the building department services, not housing and zoning, not other things, we will most likely cover our costs in terms of the revenue that we bring in. You would also cover SafeBuild's costs, based on an 80-20 split, obviously. There is another question that hasn't been discussed, and that is what happens when things get back to revenues of $2 million, which we have had in the past. Under the, at that point in time, or at least in the following calendar, or following fiscal year, according to the terms of the contract, it would be a 75-25 split. So SafeBuild will get 1.5 million, the city will get $500,000. Now, in accordance with the state law, you can't do anything with money you collect for permit fees, other than put it back in the department. So I don't know what you do with that $500,000, other than lower your permit fees so that you just cover your expenses. But I still don't know if I've answered your question appropriately, or if I have enough information to do so this evening.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a, councilor, have a question?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Slater?
Mark, I think Councilman Harlock asked you how you could meet the 748,500, or 500, how you could meet that price. And I thought you answered that question earlier by saying that if you cut two people from your department and reduced wages 25 percent, you could meet 748.
Yes, that is correct. And if that's a question you actually were getting, and I'm sorry for not answering. Yes, in order to meet a 748 or a 750 number, it would require the elimination of two positions within the building department and a 25 percent cut across the board of salaries. And yes, we could get down to 748.
And you said that you had talked to your staff, and they would be willing to do that?
I haven't gotten agreement with all of my staff to do that, but I certainly have some staff members who said, "Yeah, let's do it."
But some of that staff is under ASME, is that true?
I believe, and I have to try, I've run a number of scenarios in looking at these numbers. And I believe, let me back up. The elimination of two positions, whether it's to meet the 1,900,000, whether it's to meet the 962, whether it's to meet a 748, I have two, and it's not ASME, it's MAP employees in my department right now. In any one of those three proposals, one of those positions is being eliminated, so I'll have one MAP member left. To be honest with you, I think when I ran the numbers to try and get to the 748, I did reduce that salary as well. Now, that reduction is approximately 13.5. A 25 percent reduction in that salary, total salary is about 13.5, $13,500. So, you know, we could work around that, or, you know, if we're not permitted, and certainly before, we have no agreement in the contract to do that. But that's a number that we could work around if we had to.
And the other issue, if we got an agreement with SafeBuild that we would do an 80-20 prorated contract with them as opposed to an hourly, would that not satisfy your concern regarding the 400 and some thousand dollar issue?
Well, I guess the question would be, is you're going to take 80-20 split of what? Once again, our current active permits is around $450,000. If you're going to take an 80-20 split of that, it is, quick numbers, $270,000 that you would owe them on those outstanding permits.
Council, anybody else? Is this for Mr. Steimak, or?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Frank Tim Fleming?
I saw Mr. Lamorato signal when we were talking about what would happen with a $500,000 profit, if in fact, we did have a couple of million dollars and generated $500,000 profit. Could you respond to that?
That's quite a few years off, right?
Yeah, no, that may be a ways off, but if the profits, whatever the profits are in this 80-20, what, how could that money be utilized?
Okay, Mr. Lamorato?
Mayor and City Council, I'd love to have that problem with the profit, but. To date, we can use it for past deficits, which range over $5 million, or since 2001. There may be needed some adjusting to that number, but it's, last year, even with the building, the building code people out of there, would be roughly around an $800,000 loss last year. The, and also, if it gets to that point, if we're over a million dollars, I believe the contract calls that the price goes to 75 percent of that amount, not 80 percent. It's, all I could say is, it's a hard number to beat with the 748. It's strictly, and it may not be 748, it may be 600,000, it may be 700,000. It may be a little more than that, but it's still based on a percentage of the revenue. And that number is hard to beat, and it would be hard to staff that department with full-time employees. SafeBuild's employees will be as needed to work on these jobs. And it's based strictly on the revenue generated, 80 percent of that revenue. So I don't know how you would maintain, even though 25 percent reduction or whatever, might not even be able to do it, because you may not even have that amount of work to do. So I mean, I don't know what, when you have 80 percent of the revenue, we get 20 percent, it's a hard number to beat.
Mr. Zurley?
Thank you. Just speaking candidly, if I may. I think the venue tonight is dysfunctional to the organization of the City of Troy. To talk to a department head who says, "I'm not a department head tonight, I'm just a regular person," is a fallacy. Mark Steimak is always a department head, even when he's asleep, he's a department head who always reports to Mark Miller, who always reports to me. To listen to someone speak on an issue and essentially ignore the HR director, ignore the purchasing director, ignore the assistant manager of services, ignore the assistant manager of finance, and ignore the city manager, I found that insulting. Having said that, the basic premise on your direction was to take an organization that is economically unsustainable and make it sustainable. In the general perspective, when you have a department, as Mr. Lamorato just said, that had a several million dollar subsidy over the past several years, even taking out code enforcement, which we did, and to have a proposal that says there will no longer be a general fund subsidy because it's an on-demand service, it's 80 percent of your revenues. Mr. Steimak indicated, well, okay, we'll take 25 percent cut and pay, and lay off four or five more people going down from Department of 21 at one time, and we can match this number for 2009, or 2010, '11. However, that number is predicated, it's static, on a certain revenue stream coming in. That revenue may not be matched if the recession gets worse. What if the permit fees are less than we project? Do the employees take a 35 percent reduction? And three years from now, I've got to go to a four-day work week, where essentially it's a 20 percent reduction for everyone? Does that mean they're going to work for a 55 percent reduction? At some point, you're going to get to a Walmart model of governments that you really don't want to have. And again, I have to look at my staff tomorrow. I'm going to thank Peggy Sears, and Susan Leirstein, and John Lamorato, and Mark Miller for doing what they were told to do, by this governing body, and by me, and that was to find ways to save money for the City of Troy. I think the best thing that you can do is not talk to Mark Steimak about a financial methodology that is not his expertise, but talk to John Lamorato and Peggy Sears about a financial methodology. I'll be happy to do that. I will ask them to operationally define the savings they articulated in the March 31 memo. And if John or Mark wishes to add anything to what I just said, I'd like them to be able to speak as well.
Mr. Lamorato, or Mr. Miller?
You know, I, you know, this has been a very difficult process. And in some ways, it's pitting, you know, I'm a new person in the upper management level against employees, but that's not what this really is. But what this comes down to, if you look at this proposal, it's revenue-based. If there's zero fees, there's zero cost. And that's what this comes down to.
And I think that I need to explain why, as a council, and I sort of initiated it by saying to Mr. Steimak when he spoke in the public comments section, and we'll call him back again, is that whereas we as a council are so used to the bid, regular bid process, where we have, you know, two or three companies that are bidding, and sometimes one wants to talk, and sometimes another one wants to talk, and that kind of thing. So I thought, well, if the city employees are essentially bidding as a private company, it's a whole new area for us. I thought they should have at least a chance to talk. And so that, I know that it was unusual, but frankly, I think that having the chance to get all the written information, hear from people, ask questions and all, has been good for all of us. And I know that it's been a painful process going through all this privatization, because it's new. Like anything, when it's new, sometimes it goes easily, and sometimes it doesn't go so easily. And so I think that that has been good for us to help with the understanding. So I hope everyone will take that in the spirit in which it was intended, and not take it as a negative reflection against anyone, because it certainly was not my intention to have it here that way.
And, Your Honor, if I may, if you wish to have an operational definition from Mrs., or from Ms. Sears, Ms. Leirstein, Mr. Lamorato, and Mr. Miller, and Ms. Anderson, on the cost for the golf course, so indicate now, we'll take it off the table and bring it back next time, instead of talking about it for two hours.
Council?
Madam Mayor? We're on this, though. We're on issue.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry I dropped the gun then.
Well, should we go to that after we finish this one?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilman Harlock?
I think it is remains as a subject, because we're kind of talking about a process issue.
Right.
And I think we can head off this problem, at least for me, I'm only one of seven. But what I would like to see, anytime we're doing this, and let's say if we could roll the clock back and do this all over again, I would like to see senior staff, either directly or through a representative, meet with the employee group, or in this case, it would be the building department. In the case of the golf courses, it would be the two golf course personnel, so it would be the golf department of the Parks of Rec. And bring us their last best offer, if you will. I don't care if it's way off, but I want to see it. And so I was hoping that we'd be able to look at SafeBuild and Building Department, and be able to see where the golf is, if there is a golf, and evaluate it as members of the governing bodies. So I think that would have taken a lot of this, staff coming before council, kind of chain of command issue off the table.
Councilman Harlock, I agree with you.
Mayor.
Councilor Slater?
I do, too. I know we've, personally, what I would like to see is a study session on each department that's going to be privatized, so that we can talk about it in a study session as opposed to talking about it at the table here. But that's unrealistic, I think, to do with the two that we've already looking at now. But in the future, I would like to see a study session on each department. And having said that, I agree with Councilman Harlock also about the process.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Kerwin?
You know, going to the process again, I think that the challenge, it would be appropriate with management to meet with the employees, but I think that the challenge on all of that is, we're not privatizing the benefits and health, and the anticipated increases on that every year. And that's a number that will have to be built in, because as you pointed, as the city manager pointed out earlier, that works for one year, but not necessarily multiples. The advantage of this contract is that we can terminate it quite quickly, in the event that things don't go for us. But in the meantime, it is bringing in revenue. But in the meantime, it is bringing in revenue, and our current system simply doesn't do that. And so, I think, again, the focus has to be on a delivery of services. That's the way our community has said government needs to operate. With that, at this time, I would move the resolution pending...
I think... Oh.
We don't have a resolution before, as we've been chatting.
Yes. Well, no, because we had a presentation by staff, so we don't have a resolution. Go ahead.
I would move the resolution, H4 Building Department Services, SafeBuild Michigan Incorporated Contract, pending crafting of language by our city attorney, signed by the SafeBuild representatives regarding the 80/20 proration.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Mayor Pretend Fleming, that we approve the resolution pending the...
Crafting of language.
Crafting of language for the contract for the, with SafeBuild, for the 80/20 prorated contract. Discussion, Mayor Pretend Fleming?
Yes. The reason I seconded that motion, because in my mind, the only way I see that staff could compete with this would be to offer the same thing, which is a guaranteed 80/20 split or 75/25 split. Otherwise, there's so many variables, I don't know how they could do it year to year, given. With this contract, we have it very well defined, I think, even though we'd like to change the process how we got here and give staff maybe a little better shot and more detail. But regardless of that, when it's all said and done, this is a revenue base, as staff have said. I don't see how, you know, employees can compete with that unless they were willing to be that flexible. And if that were the case, then I'd be listening to them. I haven't seen that tonight, how they can be that flexible to be an 80/20 or 75/25 split, a guaranteed revenue stream.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltermini?
We are used to looking at things in terms of expenses, and this is a proposal in terms of revenue, and that's our job to balance the budget. At the end, I believe that we probably will break even, not make money, a lot of money on this contract this year, given what's outstanding. I hope I'm wrong. But I also know that the only way we could break even with an employee proposal is if they all took a huge cut and some of them lost their jobs. And SafeBuild has stated before and tonight, and I understand has actually scheduled interviews, so maybe nobody will have to lose their job. I don't know what the pay package is for that will be, but that's kind of how I'm looking at this at this point, except maybe Mark, you might lose yours. I hope you're fully vested. But I am. I know, Mr. Zerlike, you are offended that council gave credence to a department head instead of senior management, and I understand your frustration, but understand ours. We speak through our resolutions, and we have told everyone that employees will be able to compete. And you've heard me say on more than one occasion, "Don't send me something pre-underlined, don't do my highlighting for me, I want to do it myself." And saying, without the backup sent to us as well, that employees just couldn't compete is doing more than my underlining for me. It's making my decisions for me. And so, that is why the mayor allowed Mr. Steimak to speak, because we have to make our own decisions, and we have to be transparent to the people we represent if we are potentially cutting off the services that they are used to while we're saying we're making them the money that they want us to make to balance the budget. So, it's important that we are transparent, and we can't do that if someone doesn't underline for us. So, when the golf contract comes up, I'm sure that it's a lesson we've all learned in the process now. So, thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? And this is on discussion on the resolution as printed with the pending language being crafted by the city attorney before the contract is signed with the 80/20 prorated added?
Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman Horlach?
The possibility of all the employees working in the Building Department being offered jobs and working with SafeBuild, the only way...
Not all.
I'm sorry. Well, all but one, but the only way that could possibly work is through significant pay cuts, because the, much greater than what would be accomplished if we maintained the department in-house, because the city doesn't have to have an internal rate of return, and the company does. In other words, the company has to get a pretty nice return on their investment and on return on their revenues. They have to make money above and beyond the 20% or so that they return to the city. So, that's money that the city's leaving on the table. And when you contract out, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be, "Well, it's the same thing, but, you know, it's a private sector, so let them do it." There should actually be a reason for doing it, because when you contract it out, you lose control. And it's that way in the contracting industry as well, when you have direct employees, you have more control over the project than when you have a subcontractor. And it's the same thing here. So, the best thing as far as to have it in-house and to maintain a department as a bona fide part of the city, if all things are considered equal. And as I said the last time we discussed this, the only way that SafeBuild can make money in this game is to significantly cut the pay scales, significantly cut the pay scales, and drastically cut the benefits packages. And I can assure you, that's what's going to happen. And it seems to me, from what they presented to us, not only that, but the personnel levels are going to be decreased greater than one individual as well. Then are all these issues of hidden costs, and the fact that we have to pay SafeBuild approximately $270,000 to complete contract, or building, excuse me, building permits for which we've already collected fees is a true cost. When you're analyzing it, you have to take all of the costs the city's going to pay SafeBuild over the three years. So, that's roughly $90,000 a year on average of additional cost. Then there's the issue of rent, because the SafeBuild is paying base rent of $16, I believe, $16.75 per square foot, but that doesn't include utilities. There's the issue of vehicles. They're leasing five vehicles from the city, and yet, we don't even know how much the city is going to collect on those vehicles. Additionally, maintenance and oil and gasoline are paid for by the city. All of these things add up. Then there's the issue of all of the fixed costs, the computers and everything that's inside the Building Department. And governmental accounting is a much different game than private accounting. Governmental accounting has a much different way of accounting for fixed assets. And so, you have to look and you have to say, well, what did the city pay for these fixed assets? And subtract what the city has actually allocated to that department through an internal service charge, and that's a lost cause, a lost cost also. Then there's the issue of, when you lay off all of these people, your unemployment rate goes up. And I'm not talking about the number of people that are unemployed, but your multiplier that you have to pay based on your salary, that goes up. That's a hidden cost as well. So, at the end of the day, I think would be to our benefit to not necessarily turn this down this evening, but postpone it to allow the department to present their best offer to the city, so that we as a city council can look, look at it and ascertain whether or not we are truly moving in the direction that we as a city want to move in. And then, then we can make the decision. That would be my preferred line of action.
Is that a motion?
Further discussion of the motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Horlach?
I'll certainly defer to anybody who wants to comment, but what I would like to do at this time is to put forward a postponement resolution. And as part of that postponement resolution, I'll postpone the item, but also direct staff to work with Building Department and return to city council with their final best offer to city council.
I would second that. We can discuss it.
Moved by Councilwoman Horlach, seconded by Councilwoman Beltermini, that we postpone this item to allow staff to work with Building Department to come back with their last best offer. Is that correct, Councilwoman Horlach?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a date certain for that? I know that Councilwoman Beltermini, you won't be here at the next...
It's got to be next meeting, though. It has to be, because it doesn't...
Right, okay. Postpone for, so the next meeting, which is June... What is it?
Mayor?
It's on our agenda here. Yes, Mr. Miller?
I wanted to clarify a statement that was made regarding rents and things of that nature. The rent paid by SafeBuild is exactly the same rent which is charged to the department, which includes all of the utilities, it includes management staffing. Also, the fee, the rental rate for the cars includes the same rental rate the department is being charged, and that they are paying, the rental rate does include gas and maintenance. So, those are equivalent charges to both the private sector and public sector.
Okay. The postponement to June 7th would allow us to see the pending language regarding the 80/20 prorated items of the contract besides the items that Councilwoman Horlach put in the postponed motion. Discussion of the postponement motion?
I guess...
Councilwoman Kerwin?
You know, I'm going to vote no, no on it. There has been ample time, I think, to sit down and come down and beat this number. I think this is just dragging this out. I really do. I think this is a revenue increase. Turns out, it doesn't work. It has a wonderful termination clause. Thank you very much to our attorney. The language is carefully crafted. Appreciate that. So, I will be voting no on the postponement, and I'm prepared to vote no.
Further discussion of the postponement? Mrs. Bartholomew on the postponement?
Councilwoman, vote to meet?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlach?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mazzola?
Yes. Motion passes. Item then is postponed to June 7th. I don't think it'll take us three hours the next time.
Sure.
It's been... Yep. All right. H5 is a standard purchasing resolution, 11 rejection of proposals for the code enforcement services?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltermini?
I have a question for, I guess, the city attorney or the city clerk. Based on what just happened, should this motion be withdrawn, amended in some way? Because if we vote to retain services through the Planning Department and then in two and a half weeks vote to retain the Building Department, why wouldn't it stay there?
Mr. Zerlike? I think it's more of an operational question than it is a question for the lawyer or the clerk. We've already moved the code enforcement departments to the Planning Department. This is, in a way, it's independent of the Building Department recommendation of all the individuals in code enforcement currently work for code enforcement in the Planning Department. The reason we did that was to have more of an apples-to-apples comparison between the Building Department staff and a private sector bidder that would bid on permit fees only. That way, the Building Department would not be encumbered by a blight control division that it once had.
Okay.
That's fine, then. Under those circumstances, I move the resolution resolved that the Troy City Council hereby rejects all proposals for SOQ/RFP-COT-10-03. Code Enforcement Services open February 17, 2010, and March 18, 2010, respectively, and will retain these services in-house through the Planning Department.
Support.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Support.
I'm sorry. Moved by Councilwoman Beltermini, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion of the motion? The vote, Mr. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Horlach?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mazzola?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Zerlike, earlier you asked us if we wish to go through the presentation of the Best Value Award for the golf course operations, or if we wish to do otherwise?
Yes, I do. If the result is going to be that you'd like to see a more definitive response from Peggy Sears and working with the department, then we'll be happy to include that.
Tonight, we received, did you receive a copy of the paper that Brenda Adams White gave us, Mr. Zerlike?
I have a, it says golf course staff proposal.
Yes.
Yes, I received that this evening.
All right. Did you receive any other data information with the golf course staff proposal? There's not here in the yellow... I know, we've got this big fast.
I don't receive anything directly. It goes to my staff, the methodology that I outlined, and what I have is what you have.
Okay. I don't know if we have all of the information in front of us that was proposed when the golf course staff proposal came forward. I would think that would be beneficial, given the conversation tonight on the Building Department, that we have all that information. So, how does the rest of the council feel about that? I see head shaking.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I would prefer to see this come back. I think that's important, however, in terms of golf course operations, that it would include, or I think, something that we all realize is that Sanctuary Lake is a wonderful place, but many people don't know about it. And something that was included in the bid and is very attractive to me as a council member is that ability to get the word out and get people to the course. We've struggled with that for a long time, hence, the lack of revenue with it. And if this is going to come back out in a piece, I think that has to be included. It can't be just, phew, we made it through one year. It has to be a long-term, sustainable approach. That would be mine.
And, Your Honor...
I think that's just terribly important.
Yes.
If I may, this, the golf course, the easiest proposal that you had to look at was code enforcement, because code enforcement is an operation that's blight control. You can send someone out there, it's not on demand, there's something to do to control blight continuously by the employees in that division. It was a proposal that we received for a dollar amount, and we knew that it was only a $20-some-thousand difference, we wanted to keep it in-house. The Building Department gives a lot of heartburn, because if you don't want, if you want a guarantee not to subsidize the Building Department, you're going to vote for the private sector. If you want, if you don't want that guarantee, you may do something else. The golf course is something else, similar to the Building Department in that there's a guarantee of a certain revenue line, regardless of the rounds of golf that is played. So, you're going to have the same wrestling match that you've had mentally with the Building Department that you have with the golf course, or then you will have with the golf course as well.
Okay.
But we'll be happy to extrapolate Peggy's and Carol Anderson's and John Lamorato's and Mark Miller's and Susan Leerstein's report on the matter.
Okay. Are you suggesting June 7th again, or you want to go to the...
I suggest next Monday, but June 7th is fine.
Next month?
Calling to meet?
Next Monday?
June 7th is fine.
I understand that there may be some people out of town on the 24th. I don't know who's going to be here, who's not.
Well, John's not going to be here next Monday, so I would take that back.
Well, that's, several people, probably three people that are going to be gone. Because we've met, John, Mr. Zerlike, I think we've had, what, six meetings in a row here, every Monday?
Yes.
It's become one blur here, between all the study sessions-
Like the old days.
...and the others, so that's probably-
It's your choice. The 7th is, the 7th is fine, first meeting is fine.
Okay. All right. Do you need a motion?
Yes.
You need a motion, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
I would move that this item be postponed until the June 7th council meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Bell Tumini, seconded by Councilwoman Horlak, that we postpone this item H. 6 to the June 7th City Council meeting. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Horlak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Merson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
And I suggest that council members would like certain kinds of information, that they get that to Mr. Zerlike in time for, so that we can all have it, for the meeting to discuss, because I'd like to handle that one shorter than three hours, if we can. Okay.
Your honor, just one more, if I may. That'll be fine. We'll be happy to forward that on, then to Susan Leirstein and Peggy Sears.
Okay. H. 7 is approval of the Troy Brownfield redevelopment, proposed fiscal year 2010-11 budget? It says budge. I think it means budget, right? Lost its T. Do we have a-
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Mayor Protem Fleming?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the resolution as printed.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman, by Mayor Protem Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
I'm just wondering what the payment to the bank is for.
Pardon?
I'm just wondering what the payment to the bank is for.
Oh, okay.
Why is this to go there?
Mayor?
Mr. Miller?
Repayment of eligible expenditures on a Brownfield plant.
To who?
To the bank, TCF Bank. They're, they had a Brownfield plant approved for the site, okay, Coolidge and Maple, basically. And so therefore, the increased taxable value is captured to pay for their eligible expenditures.
They're the developer of the site, not a financial institution at this point.
Right, right. It's a bank branch.
That's all I needed to know.
Yeah.
All right. Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Merson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
Yes.
Motion passes. H. 6, scheduling of a special meeting. Discussion of council goals, objectives, code of conduct, council rules of procedure, boards, and committees, I think it's going to take two meetings.
Madam- So, Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby schedules a special City Council meeting for Monday, June 14th, at 7:30 PM, in the Council Boardroom of Troy City Hall, 500 West Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for the purpose of discussing council goals and objectives, code of conduct, council rules of procedure, and that's all.
That boards and committees?
I think that's too much.
Do we want to go in that order, or do we want to do boards and committees first, and then the other? I don't know how, where the staff is on their report on boards and committees.
Well, anyhow, that resolution's, it hasn't been seconded, so.
All right. Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, without the last, and boards and committees, do we have a second?
House support.
Seconded by Councilwoman Slater. Discussion, Mr. Zerlike? Oh, yes, Mrs. Blum?
Mayor, yes, thank you. I just wanted to indicate that that is a date that I will not be available, I already have a commitment on that date, so to the extent that you need me to be there for that discussion, I'm not able to make that.
Mrs. Lancaster could be there?
Mayor, this is one where it's, if you're discussing the rules, the council goals and objectives, that's probably one that I should attend, if at all possible. I will be as flexible as I can be, I just, I know I already, that I have that committed.
Oh. And Councilwoman Bell Tumini said she won't be there, so what's the next available Monday?
I would amend it to the 28th, June 28th.
June 28th?
June 28th.
June 28th. All right.
Support?
House support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we amend, make it be June 28th. Discussion, Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
No, that was all.
Oh, okay. Where do we stand on the report about boards and committees, Mr. Zerlike?
I'd like to defer to our city clerk, please.
Okay.
Before we go there, you need to vote on this one, because you're, it's not-
Oh, I can't ask a question here.
And actually, you have an amendment on the main motion?
Right.
On the amendment? Councilmember, Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. And now can I ask my question?
Now you have a main motion, as amended.
Pardon?
A main motion as amended.
Right. And then I can ask my question. You're tough. Okay, Councilwoman Horlak, you had a question?
I did, Mayor. And the, I would prefer to leave the call to meeting as printed, and the reason for that is, I want to leave it open-ended, in case, for whatever reason, you know, we decide to cover more information, or decide to, whatever the case, I'm just going to amend it to reinsert and boards and committees.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Horlak, seconded by Councilwoman Bell Tumini, that we amend the resolution to reinsert and boards and committees to the resolution for the 28th.
Madam Mayor?
Discussion, Councilwoman Kerwin?
I think, the reason I left that off, I think that's going to be a really big discussion. And I think that we have plenty to deal with, we've never had a code of conduct, we've talked about it, handed it out, we have outcomes or goals which we really need to get through. I see that lasting for quite some time, and it seems to me that it's two different minds. One is our own work in developing our own rules, so that we can practice good governance together. And the second one is looking at how we want to look at our boards and committees, as they have evolved over time. Some of that is in fact through a presentation by staff, on what the different committees involve, and what are needed. And so that one I see actually as a separate meeting. We're already going into July on that, I would prefer to, that's why I left it off. I think it's just too much to gobble off in one night, so that's, I won't, I won't vote for that.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Horlak?
Yeah, just to speak to the issue, I do have a concern, because, you know, as we reduce staff headcount here, one of the things I want to avoid is having a lot of extra council meetings, because that ties up a lot of resources. And I'd like the staff to be able to focus on a day-to-day operations, and only have meetings when we absolutely need it. And I do believe that, with respect to boards and committees, that I think we do need to make, you know, at least some decisions, so that staff and the members of the boards and committees can have an idea of where we're going with this, because none of us actually know where we're going with this, and we have a lot of people that are kind of hanging there, waiting for us to make a decision. So if nothing else, at least we can get the conversation started. And, you know, I think the mayor and the six of us, as members of council, can allocate the time in that meeting accordingly, but, you know, if we have to have a long meeting to avoid another meeting, I think it would be to everybody's advantage.
Further discussion? I don't know how the newest members of council feel, because they haven't been in one of our meetings, when we did the rules of procedure, and code of conduct, and all the rest of the stuff, but I'm sure that you, if you wanted to express something, you would. Frankly, I think it's a bit much to do all of that in one meeting, I really would prefer two meetings, but I'm open to the majority of what they want to do. I do think it's important to set a meeting and get going on all of those items.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
I, too, believe that that's a lot for one meeting, and I don't think that we'll get through it all. I don't mean to sound negative. On the other hand, some things may not take us nearly as long as we hoped. And we do have boards and committees where people's terms have expired months ago, including boards and committees set by statute, which I think our resolution said we would reappoint.
Right.
That has not happened.
No.
So until some of those things begin to happen, we have people out there not feeling only fully appreciated, but fully utilized. And that's a disservice to the people we serve.
Okay, frankly, I wanted to do boards and committees first, and then all the rest of the stuff.
Well, I'm with you.
That was my initial proposal, so. All right, there's an amendment on the floor, excuse me, Mr. Zerlike?
I'm sorry, if I'd been given this instruction earlier, then I forgot it, and I apologize. But what, what do you want from staff on boards and committees?
We want-
What do you want us to provide you?
We wanted to know which ones were mandated and set by state statutes that we absolutely had to have, that we couldn't do without. Secondly, if staff had information on, if the present boards and committees are serving the purpose, you know, for example, we've got a Parks and Rec board that meets with Carol Anderson, and talks about all this stuff, about the parks and stuff, do we want to continue to have that? We have an ethnic issues committee, we have, you know, different committees, okay. If we want to combine any of those, or if we want to stop some completely, because we, we have fewer staff, we'll have fewer ability to meet, you know, with boards and committees. So I thought there was some kind of a report-
Is there overlap between committees?
Pardon?
If there's overlap between committees, you'd like to know about that, essentially?
Right.
And the functions, if there's no overlap, what they do? Okay, Tony?
No, we don't want to know about overlap, we're thinking maybe we would combine some, at least that was broached. And then, of course, the list of which ones were absolutely required to keep, so.
Madam Mayor?
Okay, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Originally, originally, especially for our newer folks, as a thoughtful process, where the committees, actually, their functions have been discussed. We have all received, I think many of us have already received what's mandated and what isn't mandated, we've seen that. But in essence, I say there are different ways that we're going to be looking at the benefits of a citizens group, where these challenging issues which we face might be approached in a different manner. At one time, certain issues were paramount. Certainly, right now, financial is key. So some of the citizen involvement would be geared to that, but that would be a conversation we would need to have together. But that's why I was hoping for, and I mentioned this a long, long, long time ago, a study session specifically devoted to that. And I'm troubled that we're just trying to put all that together. This is my third year, you know, the organizational meeting is always rushed, and we, as a council, say, well, we can get back to those rules, and we can look at those in another time, it never has happened. Code of conduct is something that I know Councilmember Lambert asked for repeatedly, never was the time set to really do that. I think, I really believe that getting our own house in order before trying to buy off all of that in a single evening is the best approach.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to amend, the way I suggested, to reinsert boards and committees, that's where we are right now. Further discussion? Okay, vote on the amendment, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Motion, motion passes. Okay. June 28th, oh, I know, the main motion. She went for June 28th.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll see how that meeting goes, we might not get all of it done anyway, so. All right. Okay, we'll put that on our calendar, all right. Okay, where are we here? H. 9, modification to chapter 60, fees and bonds required, fire department, a modification to chapter 93, fire prevention, and there's an item on the table, about this, right? Someone want to move that resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
Resolve that chapter 60, fees and bonds required of the code of the city of Troy as proposed, is hereby adopted as recommended by city management. A copy of this ordinance shall be attached to the original of this meeting, and resolve that chapter 93, fire prevention, and the code of the, of the code of the city of Troy as proposed, is hereby adopted as recommended by city management. A copy of this ordinance shall be attached to the original of these, this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Bell Tumini, seconded by Mayor Protem Fleming, that we approve both resolutions. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. The consent agenda. Council have any items they wish to have exempted? Staff have any items they want to have exempted?
No.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Resolve that all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution, approving all consent agenda items with this vote. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
Yes.
Kerwin? Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bell Tumini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Future council agenda items, J. 2, temporary merchant business ordinance and farm stands. In the public comments section, we had the gentleman who is requesting, I know, I'm not calling on him again, I just want him to know that, I know he's still here, requests that because he wants to do the farm stand at Open Mall. As you know, when this ordinance came before us, previously, with the previous council, I opposed the temporary merchant ordinance, because I felt that it was a disservice to bricks and, bricks and mortar businesses within our community. When you read the item that is with this agenda, item, the memo, there were six businesses that were surveyed, they felt, and they all felt like I did, and I thought, oh, hooray. Because I think that even though the proposal is something that, you know, people like to buy stuff fresh, I'm not denying that, I think that there are enough businesses to buy stuff fresh, I'm not denying that, I think that there are enough businesses within Troy that already have that ability, plus we have some pretty nifty home farm stands that are within our city, plus just over the border on Dequender. And I do think that it's important for us to be supporting those. So I would not be in favor of this. In fact, I'd like to have the ordinance go back to the planning commission and change it back to what we used to have, where we didn't have temporary transit merchants doing windshields in parking lots and whatever else that was there. Anyone else?
I would, I've-
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Well, I voted no on it before, so I would, if there was a consensus, I would like to see it revisited.
Anyone else?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Slater?
I wasn't here when, when that was done, so I don't know the history on that, but I'm always willing to look at, at something.
In favor of-
Revisiting it.
Or expand, oh, okay, all right, okay. Anyone else? Councilwoman Bellamy, I think you were opposed to it originally. I don't know if you've changed your mind, you sense that or not?
You drumming up business here?
Yeah, I am, we are.
I was opposed to it, and I, I still, I still have problems with it because of the businesses in this town that pay real property taxes and personal property taxes, and I, I don't see that happening with a temporary business, and yet I know in some places they are highly successful. I mean, you go across the street from the post office in Auburn Hills, and that temporary stand is there six months out of the year. They have their place. I, I don't know what their place is in Troy. I am still really, that's a conundrum for me.
Well, I'm not interested in expanding it, that's for sure. Yes, Mayor Merton Fleming?
I guess I'm the oddball, but I like the idea. And I think having a right place at Oakland Mall could increase the traffic at Oakland Mall. And I can say they could use it. And I think competition's always healthy, getting fresh produce there, you know, if, you know, if it's going to be, if the people frequent it, it'll be successful. If not, it won't, it won't last. But I think it would increase traffic at Oakland Mall, and where they're putting it, I don't see a problem. I know it'd be, it'd be some nice structure that we have to approve that would stay up. And I know that other surrounding communities have these, and they seem to do quite well. And we're offering something to the citizens that we don't have now, and I think competition's up.
Well, I have to differ with the, we don't have now. I think we do, and I think that that, anyway, it's not an agenda item tonight. Does council wish to have it be an agenda item in the future? I think that's what we're asking.
I think so.
I think so.
I think so.
All right, we'll have it be an agenda item, but.
Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Miller?
Our problem is what, what, what do we draft for you? I mean, what the, what the, what, what, what the gentleman in the crowd would like to do is to not tear down his stand every night.
Yes, Councilman Kerwin?
Well, I think when, when you look at the reference in there, it isn't just for that. I mean, it's, it's where are we going down this road? That's the concern. And even in the survey, will, how will this impact your bricks and mortar business? And then you've got the responses to that. So it really is a basic policy question, and I think it has troubled us, it troubled us before. So I'm not talking about the corn, or what to do with Oakland Mall. I think that that's an interesting creative discussion. I'm talking about, is this ordinance the direction? And I'm not sure that it is.
And besides that, we don't write ordinances for one particular instance. At least that's what's always been the rule. Mr. Zerlay?
We're hearing two things. We can certainly address two things, but one thing that we're hearing is to revisit the entire ordinance. The other thing that we're, I don't think we're clear on is what do you want to do with the specific request before you to allow a farmer's type market, if you will, that's, that stays assembled for days on end, which the ordinance that we currently have does not allow? I mean, do you want us to go to the planning commission and ask the planning commission if they'd like to incorporate this as well in language or?
I'm not in favor of having them expand it, period.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Kerwin?
Well, Big Beaver Corridor, I mean, there were parts of the Big Beaver Corridor which said, in fact, right where we are, that they, that was envisioned. So I, my suggestion is, I think that there are creative ways of looking at this that we already may have at our disposal, whether through overlay or something else. There are creative things to be done clearly with Oakland Mall. This ordinance does more than that as it sits, and I don't know that it's in the best interest of us to continue with it, so.
I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Councilwoman Bellamy? Thank you.
The planning commission minutes say that, as opposed to exactly what Mr. Van Houty is asking for, that they think favorably on the idea of a farmer's market kind of venue. And so I guess that is where I would start. Rather than a single proprietorship sort of offering, what could be a community-based offering that we could have here that perhaps Mr. Van Houty and others could participate in? I mean, I think that's the direction I'd go, as opposed to adding one more thing for a single person as a single proprietor.
Well, and that might be something that could be done in those empty buildings down on Maple Road, you know, set up, you know, Royal Oak has their farmer's market kind of thing, you know, that kind of stuff.
Auburn, Auburn House was just starting one out, very proud of them.
But again, that is not in a parking lot, and I just still have that problem with this whole thing about the temporary merchant business ordinance. Just have to express it.
That would be the direction I'd go, is that sort of a thing.
Right. I haven't heard from, oh, anyone else? Councilwoman McGinnis, did I hear? I, I'm still looking for signals. Who, Councilwoman Howard-Lack, I guess I heard you first.
Well, you know, thank you, Mayor. I don't, I don't see what the problem is. And as far as allowing this gentleman, or anybody else for that matter, to sell their produce in the city, you know, you look and you have Home Depot, and you used to have Kmart, and they were selling their flowers or whatever to, in their ancillary areas. This is even, and fertilizers and mulch and all that kind of stuff. This is actually much more clean-cut, you're talking about food, and food that is fresh. And I think that in, in that kind of circumstance, it seems to me, it just seems very unfair not to allow him to do that, whereas Home Depot and, and Kmart at the time, and Walmart and everybody else, these large companies are allowed to sell products outside their main building, and with, I think they get a, so they're allowed to do that. I, I, I don't see the equity in this.
Well, the difference is that those people that are selling it outside their building are already paying taxes on their building.
Sure, but Oakland Mall is paying taxes on the whole property too. And it's not like he's poaching on Oakland Mall's property, or squatting, I should say.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I think the issue's getting a little bit confused because we're looking at someone that's sitting in the audience.
I'm having trouble hearing.
We're looking at someone sitting in the audience that has a specific question about his business and its place. But I think that what we really need to do is just generally maybe revisit the concept of farmer's market, or where, where that may fit in, I think, in the city, rather than doing this on a case-by-case basis. Because I, I think that's disingenuous to the person that's sitting here. I think it's putting everyone else in an awkward position because they're not quite sure what the direction is. But I know for myself, I think that that's something that we should maybe revisit in a general sense. And then we can go from there, and at this point, we really couldn't make any decisions about the individual business until we look at, look at everything in a, in a general picture, so.
Okay. I think the consensus is that we'd like to visit it, but talk about it in terms of a, of a combined thing, that several farmers or people that want to sell their produce together kind of thing, something that was envisioned before for the Big Beaver Corridor, and not look on it as, as something for one person. Does that give you enough direction?
If that gives Brent Savadant and Mark enough direction, it gives me enough direction.
Okay. Thank you. All right, council comments?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Tonight, we increased recreation passes. And when I was looking at that in preparation for tonight, I also pulled out Troy today. And particularly, on page 32, we see recreation passes. We, again, we gave direction to Carol Anderson to bring the community center into a revenue stream. And I think that this is another area that can be done. But puzzling in that, there are so many definitions of seniors. Here on the recreation pass, a senior is 60. Golfing, a senior is 52. For eating lunch, a senior is 50. I think that I would like management, and if there's consensus, management to look into that kind of a definition. And also in terms of overall fees, I see that in pass types, there's a recreation pass for an adult, and then there's a recreation pass for those who are challenged economically. And I think that should a senior be falling into that category, that that might be the better place to deal with that. Some seniors, I see, I almost qualify for this now. Some seniors may well be able to afford, you know, the fee per year quite well, quite more than someone younger who is jobless and so on. So I guess if there was consensus, I would like to give direction to management to have a conversation and perhaps in viewing things in a different way rather than all of these.
But you're not proposing for those of us that do fall in the category of the senior?
I, I'm not proposing-
That they have a break in their, in their cost?
What I am suggesting is that management take a look at the structure. Because again, Madam Mayor, sometimes the fees just don't make sense. And I think that if we were going to look at an economically challenged person, that may be a senior, it may not. But I think that it has to be more equitable, we've talked about this before, have the service pay for itself through the revenue streams. And we're, we have a whole lot of categories here. And that's just my suggestion, if there were consensus, that management could go ahead and take a look at that fee structure. I think it's overdue. Is there?
Anyone else?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Howard-Lack?
For the first time in my life, yesterday, I had to dial 911 here in Troy. And it's not the first time I've ever dialed 911 in my life, but the first time in this city. And I will, I will tell you, in another South Oakland community, a few years back, I actually witnessed a gruesome accident, had to call 911 there, and had the stressful situation of being, getting a busy signal, and then getting put on hold. It took about 15 minutes to get through. Here yesterday in Troy, I got right through, and had, had the misfortune of having a phone with a loose cord in the back and actually had to call back. But I will tell you that I don't think it's anybody's surprise, but the response in this city is outstanding. I was, I was concerned because I could see the police car pulling up, and I was still on the phone, and I was the person who had done the person incident, like, okay, go, 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 you know, I got to get the door. So I want to just thank the Troy Police Department and Alliance Mobile Health for their rapid response and professionalism. And you know, everybody was kind of shaken up, and so, you know, not only do they respond professionally, but they have a tendency to kind of reassure you as well through their command of the situation.
Thank you. I'm glad you had good service. Did you get consensus on Councilman Kerwin's item?
Did I?
A lot of people were shaking their head. I don't know. That's why I called in, Councilman Howard-Lack, I thought he was going to talk on that, but-
One, two, three, four, five. Yes, I did.
Yeah, it's okay, we can take a look at it.
I do.
I just had to admit that I was in the category, since Councilman Kerwin said she wasn't in the category.
Can I ask for one clarification on that? I know it's late, but do we want to get to a place where there'll be discounts for essentially people in need as opposed to an entitlement based on someone's age?
I think-
Is that where we're going?
Some things for people in need when, when it comes back to us, yeah. Just because we're in a financial crunch doesn't mean that we can't be compassionate toward those people who really need. They may not want to participate in whatever it is that we're offering at a discounted rate. And there might be some people who want to participate who don't deserve to have a discount because they have enough money to pay for it. So it shouldn't be just, you know, on the age. Councilman Kerwin?
A couple of the town meetings that we had, speaking with residents, very irate woman who had received a discount.
Who?
Because she said, here you are, standing up there saying, you need money, you need money, and just this week, I received this discount. That just doesn't make any sense to me. The woman didn't need the discount, didn't want the discount, believed that it was, was, you know, and so I think that we have to be sensible about this. We know the demographics, you have the Semco data. You know where the money is. So if, if there are seniors or others who are in need, that makes sense, I think, to people. But other than that, we need to be paying for the service with what we have. So I'm not trying to micromanage. I just simply pulled out all of this stuff, and I thought, you know, I could be a senior. Okay, sorry.
Any other council comments? Because we have a closed session item. Any other council comments, anyone kind of, yeah?
Mayor?
I'm listening.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Slater?
I did have something I wanted to discuss, but I think I'll do it at the next meeting. It's getting kind of late, and I'll move the resolution for closed session as printed.
That's a point.
Moved by Councilwoman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that Troy City Council should meet in closed session as permitted. And included in the resolution, you don't, I don't have to read it all. As printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bellamy?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes, and we are in recess, and we'll convene in the other room.